The Board will now come to order. Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Alderwoman Tyus. Alderwoman Middlebrook. Alderman Bosley. Alderwoman Evans. Alderman Page. Alderwoman Negracia. Alderman Calder. Alderwoman Rice. Alderman Gunther. Alderman Ballmer. Alderman Lappy. Alderman Stevens. Alderwoman Switzer. Alderwoman Howard. Alderman Odenberg. Alderwoman Peel. Alderman Todd. Alderwoman Davis. Alderwoman Spencer. Alderwoman Keys. Alderwoman Walker. Alderman Vaquaro. Alderman Orion. Alderman Con. Alderwoman Clark Hubbard. Alderwoman Boyd. Alderman Grass. President Green. Alderwoman Tyus. Alderman Calder. Alderman Ballmer. Alderwoman Howard. Alderwoman Clark Hubbard. Twenty-four, President, you have quorum.
A quorum being present, we will be led in prayer today by Balanon Penny, Temple Board and Education Chair of the Hindu Temple of St. Louis.
Good morning, everyone. And thanks for having me here. We're very grateful, on behalf of Hindu Temple of St. Louis. I would like to thank the Board members and also the Aldermans and Alderomens for having me here for the short prayer. This prayer is a Vedic chanting. It's a chanting in a Vedic sense. The rhythm of the chanting helps to remove the obstacles and creates the energy to purify the air. And I'll give you a very one-minute brief explanation what it is just after completing. Here it goes. Om Gananaamtva Ganapati gumhavamehe kavim kavina mupamashr vastamam jashtharajambrahmanam brahmanaspata anashundvan nutibhi sidasadanam pranodevi sarasvati vade bhirpaajinivati dhinama vitrayavatu ganesha yanamaha sarasvatyay namaha shri guru pyo namaha hari om om bhur bhvasvaha tat savitur varanyam bhargo devasya dhimahi dhioyo napracodaya om shanti shanti shantihi I pray to you, the Lord of Gurus of demigods who removes obstacles, your omniscient with complete knowledge. You know more than anybody else. I have come to you recognizing your greatness. You're the Emperor of the Emperors. You are yourself Brahma. I have propitiated you with my chanting of adoring hymns. I salute you for the fulfillment of my desires. You are the highest treasure among treasures. You grant your devotees both treasure of food and treasure of wisdom. We invoke Saraswati, the goddess of speech. May she be pleased with us and inspire our intelligence. Prostations to Ganesha, Saraswati, and Sri Guru. Om, peace, peace, peace. Thank you.
Introduction of honored guests. Any introduction of honored guests?
Good morning, everybody. I wanted to honor Major Ryan Cousins of the homicide division. Gamble Center could not let people into their center because of the crime that has been going on and there's no windows on the doors. So what he did was him and another officer worked and they put cameras on Gamble Center so our kids could still use that center. And so the people that came into the center were safe. And so I want to honor him as my honored guest today.
Thank you, Alderwoman. Alderwoman from the nineteenth?
And I definitely did owe that honor. You see, we love our police. They've been a part of our community. They go above and beyond all the time, not sometime. I'd like to have an honored guest and I'd like to have clarity from President of the Board. My honored guest today is Pam Ross, who is representing the St. Louis Community Colleges and its new vision for their campuses. And I wanted to get a clarity if she is allowed to sit here with me, if we have changed the floor rules and everybody can have their guests sit with them.
Go right ahead. I have no issue with that. You have a point of order?
I have a point of order.
Okay.
So our rules require that our, the board bills, instead of us going along there, have to be in front of us, in front of our desks before we start. I don't have an agenda, so I don't want us to continue until we get an agenda. I went online, I can't find an agenda. So we need to stop until we get our business in order.
Right, we will work on that while proceeding with the introduction of honored guests. Alderwoman from the twenty-seventh, or, sorry, twenty-one, twenty-first.
Good morning, and thank you, Madam Chair and members of the Board. My honored guest today is the Reverend John Watson, pastor of Maple Temple and the committee man of the wonderful Eighteenth Ward.
Alderman from the twenty-third?
As always, I'd like to have my good friend, who also drives me to all these places, Greg Meyer, as my honored guest.
Wonderful. Any further introduction of honored guests? Any further introduction of honored guests? Right, seeing none. Alderman from the twenty-fifth, you are recognized on the approval of the minutes. Alderman of the twenty-fifth.
My apologies, I'm just cavorting with our colleagues over here. I make a motion that we approve our meeting minutes.
Moved by the Alderman from the twenty-fifth, seconded by the Alderwoman from the fourth. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
It was the motion to approve the minutes. Yeah, I we don't have agendas in front of us.
Okay, let's
we, yeah.
They are being disseminated.
I would like to extend apology to the members of the Board. I had, we had set up a parking for members of the Board. We had ten spaces, so people ignored that. And so when I got here early, people are parked every place, from Illinois to every place else. So the Treasures Office wanted me to apologize because they intended for us to have some spaces. And I know your office also arranged something else, so I'm just really sorry about that for those who didn't get it, because we thought we were going to be okay.
Appreciate that. We will pause just for a minute while we get those agendas passed out.
Madam President?
Yes.
Point of personal privilege, I suppose, since we're kind of
You are recognized, Alderman from the twenty-fifth.
Thank you. Just to kind of piggyback off of what the Alderwoman from the first just mentioned, kind of unbeknownst to me, I parked over at City Hall this morning after carpooling with the wonderful Alderwoman from the Twentieth Ward. And we were actually greeted with microtransit over at City Hall. So for those of you that do have concerns about parking or being able to walk from City Hall over to 1520 City Hall West, there was some transit available this morning from City Hall over to 1520. So I'm not sure if that's supposed to be happening regularly while we're meeting here. But if in the future people have that concern, if we can make sure that that's available, that would be great.
Yes, that is the plan for as long as we are meeting here, to continue with the microtransit from, thanks to Alderman Page for setting that up.
It's like a shuttle. Yeah, it's a tiny shuttle.
Just to make note, all documents are in the Google Drive. So if you have a laptop with you today, you can access all documents through the Google Drive as well. Is there anyone who is still waiting on documents? The back half, okay.
Yes, agendas are still missing for the people in the rear.
The rear of the room.
So many jokes to be Madam President, may I make another note of personal privilege?
You are recognized, Alderman from the twenty-fifth.
Since so many of my colleagues on the floor aren't at a microphone and are making jokes, I feel like I have to join in the choir here. I have to just acknowledge that this is the first day that Lisa McNichols is not here with us. And so this wouldn't have happened on Lisa's watch, people. Just kidding. Thank you to all of the staff who are working so diligently to get the agendas for all of us. But we miss you, Lisa. She might be watching. She might be enjoying her retirement. Maybe watching it is enjoying her retirement for her. Thank you, Madam President.
Anyone still waiting on their materials? You are.
I'm just on a roll this morning. Thank you all for indulging me. I would like to also make some observations, I suppose, from the microphone, from the podium. One, we do have a lovely smorgasbord of donuts from Pharaoh's Donuts. So thank you to whoever provided those. Apparently, it's the President's Office who provided those, so thank you very much. It's a great business that's based in downtown St. Louis, frequently rated some of the best donuts in the region. I, hey, I don't want to get into the particulars of St. Louis donut fans here. You guys all have your favorites, I know, but Jay's are top-notch. They did start in the Twentieth Ward. Thank you, Alderwoman from the first, formerly the Twentieth. Also, for those of you that might be new, which is probably a third of the Board, 1520 has restrooms that are just on the side of the foyer here. So if any of you need to take a bio break during our deliberations, you just head out to the foyer and it's either to the left or the right. There's also a break room up in SLC's offices that has more coffee, in case we run a little long today. And it also has some of the best ice in City Hall. So I, you know, have a tendency to carry around my own cup of water and I do enjoy going up there to get some of the, it's almost crushed ice, but it's not crushed ice. So I'm sure I'm, you know, just rumbling on here, rambling on until I get into an agenda. I guess I'm kind of filibustering a little bit, but I just wanted to make sure that everyone was aware of those kind of notes since we're in a new space, so thank you. Oh, so the ice, let me tell you about this. So the ice. So when you go upstairs, it's at the front of the building. There's a, those two conference rooms that SLDC has that we regularly kind of meet in for various meetings. In between those two conference rooms is a break room. And the break room has the ice machine that also has a filtered water. But I use St. Louis tap water. I'm 100% St. Louis tap water. It's the best tap water in the country. It also has coffee, which I don't touch, but I've heard it's really lovely. So, you know, there's various types of ice that come from ice machines. Let me walk through that for you. There's crushed ice, obviously, which I think a lot of folks are familiar with. There's also cubed ice, which a lot of folks are familiar with. There's also ice that's shaped like a top hat, so it has a little dimple in it. Yeah. I have my agenda, I will no longer talk about ice. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman from the twenty-fifth, for your thorough examination of donuts and ice in St. Louis.
Whew, all right. I'm just gonna, I'm just gonna Google ice cubes for the folks at home who are curious. Because there really are, there are different types of ice cubes and they all have their own function, for sure. So my little resource guide here. There's crescent ice, for those of you that are familiar. It has the kind of wedge shape. I don't, I'm not a big personal fan of wedge ice. I prefer the, the, oh, it's called gourmet ice. The dimpled ice, the top hat ice, is called gourmet ice. SLDCs are the nugget ice. Shaved ice.
Alderwoman from the twentieth, what's your point of order?
This is, thank you, Madam President, members of the Board. This is not entertaining at all. I would like to inquire of the Alderman from the twenty-fifth.
Alderman from the twenty-fifth?
I will yield for questions from my dear colleague of the Twentieth Ward. And I hope she remembers that I gave her a ride to the office today.
It was the strangest ride I've ever taken to City Hall.
I like the scenic route.
I think we forgot three times where we were going and I've never taken a longer, more enjoyable ride.
Thank you.
It did come with gum, it was great.
And clean seats and lotion. For the bitter cold, gotta
I had a question for you.
I gotta keep these hands lotioned up, I don't want to be ashy.
What did the horse say after it tripped? Do you have any idea? Help, I've fallen and I can't
What did the horse say after it tripped?
Help, I've fallen and I can't giddy up.
Oh, that's adorable.
What do you call an angry carrot, do you know?
Are we, are we practicing for Halloween here?
You know, I thought if we were gonna be up here, we could just tell some jokes. I don't know, we're just talking about ice.
I need to, you know, brush up on my Halloween jokes, so
Here we go. What do you call an angry carrot? This is not just for the Alderman from the twenty-fifth. A really steamed veggie.
Oh, a steamed veggie.
Alderman, do you know where polar bears keep their money?
On ice?
Their money. A snowbank.
Oh, a snowbank. Well, I mean, unfortunately, those are melting at the moment, but
All right, here's a good one. Do you have any idea how do you make, how does an Alderman make an egg roll?
I'm afraid, I'm afraid to ask.
You push it, you push it, you push it. Does anybody have an agenda, does everybody have an agenda, can we please?
No, we still have a few that we're waiting on.
I can go all day, I got, I got, I got this website, it's a hundred and nine of these. All right, I'm gonna defer back to the Alderman from the twenty-fifth to keep educating us on ice.
Shall we take a short recess?
I think that would be lovely. Yes.
If we could take
I would like to make a motion that we recess for fifteen minutes. Ten minutes.
Ten minutes.
I'd make a motion that we recess for ten minutes.
Okay, motion by the Alderman from the twenty-fifth, seconded by the Alderman from the twelfth, that we take a ten-minute recess while the remainder of the agendas make their way over.
Thank you, Madam President. Oh, I guess we need to take a vote, huh?
Oh.
All in favor?
Opposed? Okay, we will return in ten minutes. Right, we will now come back to session. Thank you for bearing with us while we're getting some of the kinks out, being over at 1520 Market. Looking forward to us being back in the chambers after the first of the year is the hope, so that we have access to our own printers and own technology and all of that. One note I do want to make is members of the public are not allowed on the floor, just to make that clear, that the floor is reserved for alderpeople and for staff. All right, line item six, report of city officials.
Report of city officials can be found in A, B, and C of the agenda that has been placed in the Alderman's mailboxes. Dear members of the Board, I have the pleasure to submit the following individuals for appointment and reappointment to the Dutch Town Community Improvement District. The appointment of Mr. Saladin Martinez, the appointment of Ms. Anne Smart, the appointment of Ms. Fadumo Hassan, the reappointment of Mr. Michael Powers, the reappointment of Ms. Stephanie Le Chance, and the reappointment of Ms. Kaya Afuro. I respectfully request the approval of this appointment, sincerely to Shara O. Jones, Mayor.
Alderman from the twenty-fifth, you are recognized on the Mayor's appointment to the Dutch Town Community Improvement District Board.
Thank you, Madam President. I rise very much in support of this, I'm very excited. The Dutch Town Community Improvement District has been doing awesome work and it is my pleasure to nominate or confirm the Mayor's appointments to the Dutch Town Community Improvement District Board.
It's been motioned by the Alderman from the twenty-fifth, seconded by the Alderwoman from the eighth, to approve the Mayor's appointments to the Dutch Town Community Improvement District. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Anyone wish to take any bills off the informal calendar? Anyone wish to take any bills off the informal calendar? Alderwoman from the second, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam President. I would like to take Board Bill 117 off the informal calendar and put it on perfection consent.
Madam Chair, please make note of that, put one, you said 124 or 40?
117.
117. You're poor boy still. 117 on the perfection consent calendar. Or regular, did you say perfection consent? Perfection consent.
So noted.
All right. Does anyone wish to take any other bills off the informal calendar? Anyone wish to take any other bills off the informal calendar? Alderman from the fifth?
Madam President, I'd like to confirm that Board Bill 93 is on the informal calendar as we speak.
Yes, it is still on the informal calendar. All right. First reading of board bills.
Board Bill 137, introduced by Alderwoman Clark Hubbard, in ordinance to provide Board Bill 137, introduced by Alderwoman Clark Hubbard, in ordinance to provide for independent investigation of law enforcement misconduct and use of force incidents and repealing ordinance number 71556 and enacting in lieu thereof a new ordinance that reconstitutes and provides staff support for the civilian oversight board and provides coordination and staff support for the detention facility oversight board created under ordinance number 71430, establishing the Division of Civilian Oversight within the Department of Public Safety and authorizes the establishment of Public Integrity Unit directed by Circuit Attorney in the City of St. Louis. Board Bill 137, introduced by Alderman Bosley, in ordinance approving a redevelopment plan dated I'm sorry, September 27, 2022, for the 1423 and 1435 Mallinckrodt Street area in the City of St. Louis. Board Bill 139, introduced by Alderman Bosley and President Green, in ordinance calling and providing for the holding of an election in the City of St. Louis on April 4, 2023, for the purpose of submitting to the qualified voters of the City of St. Louis a proposal to impose an additional sales tax for 3% on the retail sales of adult-use non-medical marijuana made in the City of St. Louis containing emergency clause. Elections to be held on the general election, municipal election date prescribed by Section 115.121.3, revised Missouri of Tuesday, April 4, 2023. Board Bill 140, introduced by Alderman Grass, pursuant to ordinance number 70333, as amended by ordinance number 71394, in ordinance directing the Director of Streets to install speed humps to combat flow traffic on the 4300 block, 4400 block, 4500 block, 4600 blocks of McPherson Avenue, 400 block of North Taylor Avenue, 300 and 400 blocks of North Boyle Avenue, 51 and 5200 blocks of Washington Place, 6,06100 blocks of Washington Boulevard, 58 and 5900 blocks of Persian Avenue, and the 400 block of North Newstead Avenue. Board Bill 141, introduced by Alderwoman Tyus, in ordinance recommended by the Board of Public Service authorizing the 2022 St. Louis Works and the 50-50 Sidewalk Programs wide, providing for the construction and reconstruction of gutters, streets, driveways, spot curbs, sidewalks, alley, traffic control, beautification, tree planting, resurfacing, and related engineer adjustments listed herein, appropriating $9.8 million from the Street Improvement Fund, containing sections for description of the work, approval of plans, specifications, works, material grantees, estimated costs from city funds, and supplemental agreements and reversions, authorizations, applicable state and federal wage rate requirements, equal opportunity provisions, the Mayor's executive orders, contract advertising statutes, and the public work emergency clause. Board Bill 142, introduced by Alderman Calder, in ordinance approving a redevelopment plan dated November 15, 2022, for the Two Gateway South Redevelopment Area. Board Bill 143, introduced by Alderwoman Peel, in ordinance recommended by the Board of Public Service to conditionally vacate above-surface, surface, and subsurface rights for vehicle equestrian and pedestrian travel in areas adjacent to City Block 3888, an irregular portion of Born-Tas Piddle Plaza from King's Highway East 625.31 feet, an irregular portion of King's Highway beginning at, beginning 133.96 feet north an irregular portion of King's Highway beginning at 133.96 feet north of Born's Hospital and extending northward 125.8 feet of aerial and subsurface only, and a 4.55 foot by 32.08 foot section of Born's Hospital near the center line of the street beginning 249.96 feet east of King's Highway in the City of St. Louis, Missouri, as herein after described in accordance with Charter Authority and in conformity with Section 14 of Charter, I'm sorry, Article 21 of the Charter, and imposing certain conditions on such vacation. Board Bill 144, introduced by Alderwoman Peel, in ordinance recommended by the Board of Public Service to vacate a portion of the air rights over Born's Hospital Plaza beginning 243.01 feet east of King's Highway and extending eastward 50 feet in the City of St. Louis, Missouri, as herein after described, authorizing construction of a portion of a structure in the vacated area under certain terms and conditions. Board Bill 145, introduced by Alderwoman Davis, in ordinance determining that the tax increment financing plans listed in Exhibit A are making satisfactory progress except as noted on the proposed time scheduled for completion of projects therein. Board Bill 146, introduced by Alderwoman Davis, in ordinance authorizing directing the mayor and controller of the City of St. Louis to execute upon the receipt of any consideration of the sum of $500 and other good and valuable consideration of quitclaim deed to remise, release, and forever quitclaim until the U.S. Department of Veteran Affairs certain city-owned property located in City Block 3709, which property is known in number as 3739 Windsor Place, St. Louis, Missouri, 63111, in the City of St. Louis, Missouri. That is the extent of first reading of board bills.
Alderman from the 3rd, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board. I'd like to suspend the rules to introduce Board Bill 147.
There's been a motion from the alderman from the. Do you want to do both of them at the same time?
Yes, yes. I'd like to suspend the rules to introduce Board Bills 147 and 148.
Also want to add. Want to add 149 in there as well?
And 149.
Okay, thank you.
All right, anybody else?
There's been a motion made from the alderman from the 3rd to suspend the rules for the purposes of introducing Board Bills Number 147, 148, and 149. It was seconded by the alderwoman from the 19th. Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Alderwoman Tyus?
Aye.
Alderwoman Middlebrook?
Aye.
Alderman Bosley?
Aye.
Alderwoman Evans?
Aye.
Alderman Page?
Aye.
Alderwoman Iglesias?
Aye.
Alderman Calder? Alderwoman Rice?
Aye.
Alderman Gunther?
Aye.
Alderman Ballmer?
Aye.
Alderman Laffey?
Aye.
Alderman Switzer?
Aye.
I'm sorry, Alderman Stevens?
Aye.
Alderwoman Switzer?
Aye.
Alderwoman Howard? Alderman Oldenburg?
Aye.
Alderwoman Peel?
Aye.
Alderman Todd?
Aye.
Alderwoman Davis?
Aye.
Alderwoman Spencer?
Aye.
Alderwoman Keys?
Aye.
Alderwoman Walker?
Aye.
Alderman Vacaro?
Aye.
Alderman Orion?
Aye.
Alderman Con?
Aye.
Alderwoman Clark Hubbard? Alderwoman Boyd?
Aye.
Alderman Grass?
Aye.
President Green?
Aye.
Alderman Calder? Alderwoman Howard? Alderwoman Clark Hubbard? 25 aye votes.
Madam Clerk, please place Board Bills Number 147, 148, and 149 on the first reading calendar.
So noted.
Point of order, make sure that those bills are all in the drive and not in the first reading.
They are. Refresh.
Refresh.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Board Bill 147, introduced by Alderman Bosley, in ordinance pertaining to street vending within an area describing amending Section 4 of ordinance number 65061 to establish and define the boundaries of a new vending district to be called the Third Ward Vending District. Board Bill 148, introduced by Alderman Brandon Bosley, in ordinance repealing ordinance 63984, approved January 1997. Ordinance 58540, approved March 1982. Ordinance 53693, approved December 1965. And ordinance 58264, approved March 1981. All pertaining to the preservation of public peace and safety in the City of St. Louis for the residents thereof by establishing a curfew applicable to juveniles and regulating their presence in public streets, alleys, right-of-rays, and other similar places, and defining the duties of parents and guardians of juveniles, providing penalties for the violation thereof, and enacting a new ordinance pertaining to the same subject matter and containing the penalty and severability and emergency clauses. Board Bill 149, introduced by Alderman Oldenburg, in ordinance authorizing a non-binding preferential vote for authorized by Article 2 of Section 6 of the Charter of the City of St. Louis to solicit taxpayer input and feedback to assist the Board of Aldermen in determining whether to increase the current salary of members of the Board of Aldermen except the president of the Board from the current amount of $37,400 to $72,000 and the amounts funded annually received by each member of the Board, including the president for charitable contributions, memberships, miscellaneous office expenses, flowers, gifts, entertainment, lobbying, and other business-related expenses, personal expenses in automobile, and travel expenses to be increased from the current $4,200 to $5,000. That's the extent of first reading of board bills.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, could you please assign Board Bill 147 to HUDs, 148 to Education and Youth Matters, and 149 to Personnel?
So noted.
Reference to Committee of Board Bills.
To the Public Safety Committee, Board Bill 137; to Neighborhood Development, Board Bill 138; to Ways and Means, Board Bill 139; to the Streets Committee, Board Bill 140, 141, and 143; to HUDs Committee, Board Bills 142, 144, 145, 146, and 147; to Education and Youth Matters, Board Bill 148; and to Personnel Committee, Board Bill 149. That is the extent of reference to Committee.
Second reading and report of standing committees.
The following board bills were reported out of transportation with a due pass recommendation. Board Bill 128, introduced by Alderman Con, in ordinance recommended by the Board of Esmond and Apportionment, authorizing directing the issuance establishment of turn, negotiated sale of airport revenue bonds not to exceed $150 million to finance the cost of purchasing, extension, improvements, or enlargement of the airport, providing for the funding of any required debt service reserve funds and for the penalty of cost of issuance. Appointing a trustee approving the form of an indenture and authorizing the preparation, execution, delivery of such document and actions as necessary or appropriate, repealing inconsistent prior ordinance provisions and containing the severability clause and an emergency clause. The following board bill was reported out of Intergovernmental Affairs with a due pass recommendation. Board Bill 44, Committee Sub, introduced by Alderwoman Rice, in ordinance submitting to the qualified voters of the City of St. Louis a proposed amendment to the Charter of the City of St. Louis enacting a new section relating to the establishment of a charter commission containing an emergency clause. The following board bills were reported out of HUDs with a due pass recommendation. Board Bill 116, introduced by Alderwoman Clark Hubbard, in ordinance recommended by the Board of Esmond and Apportionment, appropriating a portion of funds received under the American Rescue Plan Act of 2021, authorizing certain expenditures of such funds to the extent received, authorizing contracts and other documents to extend the funds to extent received containing severability and emergency clause. Board Bill 121, introduced by Alderwoman Clark Hubbard and Alderman Grass, in ordinance repealing Paragraph A of Section 2 of Ordinance Number 69915, approved on January 20, 2015, and in lieu thereof, a new paragraph is enacted, extending the period of time during which the DeBolliver Place Special Business District shall permit to collect tax within the boundaries therein established. Submitting to the qualified voters residing in DeBolliver Place Special Business District a proposal to continue the levy of tax on real property located in said district for 10 years, submitting said proposal to the voters of said district at the general election on April 4, 2023, and containing effectiveness and an emergency clause. Board Bill 123, introduced by Alderwoman Iglesias, in ordinance recommended by the Board of Esmond and Apportionment, authorizing a supplemental appropriation from the North Side Regeneration Special Allocation Fund, amended ordinance number 71505, commonly referred to as the City of St. Louis Annual Operating Plan for Fiscal Year 2022 through 2023, appropriated and setting part existing and occurring revenues and such funds to address certain current obligations of the city relating to the North Side Regeneration Redevelopment Area and containing an emergency clause. Board Bill 125, introduced by Alderwoman Davis, in ordinance recommended by the Board of Esmond and Apportionment, authorizing, I'm sorry, appropriating a portion of funds received under the American Rescue Plan Act of 2021, authorizing certain expenditures of such funds to the extent received, authorizing contracts and other documents to extend the funds to the extent received containing severability and emergency clause. Board Bill 129, sponsored by Alderwoman Davis, in ordinance repealing Section 4 of the ordinance number 64517 by designating the Special Allocation Fund for Argyle Redevelopment Area and terminating the designation of a portion of the City of St. Louis, Missouri, as redevelopment area and authorizing certain actions relating thereto. The following board bill was reported out of Neighborhood Development with a due pass recommendation. Board Bill 118, sponsored by Alderwoman Walker, in ordinance repealing Ordinance 71451, which approved Chapter 99 Redevelopment Plan blighting study for 4201 rear Geraldine Redevelopment Area. That's the extent of second reading report of standing committees.
Thank you. Alderman from the 25th? Alderman from the 25th, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam. Is this on?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. Thank you, Madam President. I believe I am making the motion to suspend the rules to move the following board bills to the perfection consent calendar, and that would be Board Bills 121, 123, 125, 129, and 118.
There's been a motion from the alderman from the 25th, seconded by the alderman from the 9th, to move Board Bills Number. You're gonna have to repeat.
121, 123, 125, 129, and 118. They're a little out of order. My apologies.
Okay, 121, 123, 125, 129, and 118 to the perfection consent calendar.
116 is not on my list.
I'm sorry, could we please add Board Bill 44 Committee Substitute to that list?
So my understanding is we're going to move them over to perfection consent and then a second group over to the regular perfection calendar.
This is, there's two steps here. 44 and 116 are later. They're on a different calendar.
Another way to do this, Alderman, we could do all of them right now and then move those bills over to the regular perfection.
I'd rather do, yeah, because, well, they're on two different calendars, though. So this would be a motion to move them to, the board bills I just read to the perfection consent calendar, and then I'll make a motion later to move 44 Committee Substitute and 116 to the perfection calendar.
Okay, sounds good. So it's been moved by the alderman from the 25th, seconded by the alderman from the 9th, that we move the aforementioned bills to the perfection consent calendar. Any discussion? Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Previous roll?
Hearing no objection to previous roll? Right. Keeping us on task today. Alderman from the 25th, you are, oh, you are recognized again.
I, well, we just suspended the rule, so I make a motion that we move Board Bills 121, 123, 125, 129, and 118 to the perfection consent calendar.
We did that already.
I just suspended the rules.
It's all together.
Oh. All right, sorry. I'm on a sugar high here from all these donuts.
Last time I'm bringing coffee to this meeting.
I need to drink more water here. Ice water. So I'll go ahead and make the motion that we suspend the rules for the purposes of moving Board Bill 44 Committee Substitute and Board Bill 116 to the perfection calendar.
There's been a motion made by the alderman from the 25th, seconded by the alderman from the 9th, that we move Board Bills Number 44 Committee Substitute and Board Bill Number 116 to the regular perfection calendar. Any discussion?
That's correct. It is.
Okay.
We passed it out as a Committee Substitute out of HUDs.
Make note of that, 116 Committee Substitute.
Thank you.
Yes. Right, there is a motion from the alderman from the 25th to move Board Bills Number 44 Committee Substitute and 116 Committee Substitute from the second reading calendar to the regular perfection calendar. Okay.
Okay, I will amend my motion since there was no second to move Board Bill 44 Committee Substitute to the regular perfection consent calendar.
Hold on. There was a recognized second.
Oh, was there? Okay.
Yeah, so you would have to.
Do we not have Committee Substitute? We need to move that today.
The alderman from the 9th, okay.
We're checking on the Committee Sub at the moment because that bill needs to move today. It's not in the drive. Not the Committee Sub, okay. We are working to get the Committee Sub into the drive. Alderman, if you would withdraw your motion, we'll move ahead with the perfection consent calendar, and then we'll come back to the regular perfection calendar.
I remove my motion. The alderman from the 9th had already removed his second.
Oh, I'm hearing that it is in the drive now.
I will.
So we can have, as long as it is on people's desks, which can be either in paper form or in. So we are going to move forward with the meeting.
Okay, I will make the motion to move Board Bill 44 Committee Substitute and Board Bill 116 Committee Substitute to the regular perfection consent calendar.
It is in the drive. Right, there's been a motion made. There's been a motion made by the alderman from the 25th, seconded by the alderman from the 9th, that we move.
There's a. I don't have my laptop open, so I couldn't tell you, Alderwoman. I'd need to.
It's not, they're still saying it's not authorized.
Madam President, point of order, the aldermen from the 9th were just mentioned. We don't have any printed copies of the Committee Substitute as well, and so some of us don't have laptops. So we will need, we will need at least a couple printed copies for people to have available.
All right, we'll go ahead with the regular perfection, or with the perfection consent calendar, and then we'll come back to that motion. Okay, perfection consent.
Board Bill 77, introduced by Alderwoman Tyus, in ordinance to protect the public health, safety, and welfare. health, safety, and welfare by prohibiting the use of alleys by operators of motor vehicles for drive-through traffic in the following neighborhoods, Kingsway East, Kingsway West, Penrose, Mark Twain requiring the posting of those allowed to use of the city, I'm sorry, of the alley, contain a penalty clause and an emergency clause. Board Bill 117, introduced by Alderwoman Middlebrook, an ordinance adopted pursuant to the Intergovernmental Agreement Sections 70.210 to 70.325, inclusive of the revised statutes of Missouri authorizing the City of St. Louis and, and by through its Water Division for the purpose of outlining an agreement of the respective responsibilities of the parties with respect to the area described in the agreement which sits in the City of Clayton, and authorizing the city to accept transfer of the Private Easement from Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission and contain an emergency clause. Board Bill 121, introduced by Alderwoman Clark Hubbard and Alderman Gross, an ordinance repealing paragraph A of Section 2 of ordinance number 69915, approved on January the 20th, 2015, and in lieu thereof, a new paragraph is enacted, extended for the period of time during which the Debalver Place Special Business District shall be permitted to collect tax within the boundaries therein established. Submitted to the qualified voters residing in the Debalver's special, I'm sorry, Debalver Place Special Business District a proposal to continue the levy of tax on the real property located in said district for 10 years, submitting said proposals to the voters of said district at the general election on April 4th, 2023, contain effectiveness and an emergency clause. Board Bill 123, introduced by Alderwoman Nigrasia, an ordinance recommended by the Board of Estmen and Portman authorizing a supplemental appropriation for the North Side Regeneration Special Allocation Fund, amending ordinance number 71505, commonly referred to as the City of St. Louis Annual Operating Plan for Fiscal Year 2022 through 2023, appropriate and setting apart existing and occurring revenues and such funds addressed, address certain current obligations of the city related to the North Side regeneration redevelopment area and contain an emergency clause. Board Bill 125, introduced by Alderwoman Davis, an ordinance recommended by the Board of Estmen and Portman authorize, I'm sorry, appropriating a portion of funds received under the American Rescue Plan Act 2021, authorizing certain expenditures of such funds to the extent received authorizing contracts and other documents to expend the funds to the extent received containing severability clause and, and contain an emergency clause. Board Bill 129, introduced by Alderwoman Davis, an ordinance repealing Section 4 of ordinance number 64517 by disavowing the Special Allocation Fund of Argyle Redevelopment Area and terminating the designation of a portion of the City of St. Louis, Missouri, as redevelopment area and authorizing certain actions relating thereto. Board Bill 118, introduced by Alderwoman Walker, an ordinance repealing ordinance number 71451, which approved a Chapter 99 Redevelopment Plan and blighting study for the 4201 rear Geraldine Redevelopment Area. That is the extent of perfection consent calendar.
Thank you. Okay, Alderman from the 25th, yet again.
Thank you, Madam President. I move that we adopt our perfection consent calendar.
There's been a motion by the Alderman from the 25th, seconded by the Alderwoman from the 8th, that we approve the perfection consent calendar. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Aldermen from the 25th, you're recognized again.
I, could I recommend that we actually read the regular consent calendar while we're getting the Committee Substitute on everyone's desk?
We just, yeah, okay.
Beef stew. The Alderwoman from the first ward wants to go through my culinary repertoire here. Would you like to talk about stew versus soup? Well, the secret to a good pot pie, as everyone knows, is laminated dough, which helps it get buttery and flaky. It's all in the lamination.
All right. You can go ahead with your motion on 44 Committee Substitute and 116 Committee Substitute.
Appreciate the salvation, Madam President. Could we clarify for the members?
It is in the drive, and there are a couple of copies that are being printed.
Okay, wait a minute. It's in the drive, until the copies are printed and people who don't have access, it cannot be a motion. Okay? After everybody has big chat, and you don't have that, it's in the drive. So, people who don't have computers, it is not correct to do the motion.
All right, we'll just go ahead with 44, and then after we discuss 44, we'll come back and do 116.
Thank you, Madam President. I make a motion that we move to suspend the rules for the purposes of moving Board Bill 44 Committee Substitute to the regular perfection calendar.
Okay, it's been moved by the Alderman from the 25th, seconded by the Alderman from the 12th, that we suspend the rules for the purposes of moving 44 Committee Substitute to the perfection, regular perfection calendar. Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Previous roll?
Hearing no objection to previous roll, please, Madam Clerk, please put Board Bill Number 45 Committee Substitute.
44.
Or 44 Committee Substitute on the regular perfection calendar. Okay, board bills for perfection.
Board Bill 44, introduced by Alderwoman Rice, an ordinance submitted to the qualified voters of the City of St. Louis, a proposed amendment to the Charter of the City of St. Louis, enacting a new section relating to the establishment of the Charter Commission, containing an emergency clause.
Alderman from the 8th, you're recognized on the perfection of Board Bill 44 Committee Substitute.
Thank you, Madam President. I move that we, we perfect Board Bill 42 Committee Substitute.
It's been moved by the Alderwoman from the 8th, seconded by the Alderwoman from the 13th, that we perfect Board Bill Number 44 Committee Substitute. Alderwoman, you may proceed.
Thank you, Madam President, and members of the board. Everybody, does everyone have 44 Committee Substitute in front of them? There are printed copies and should be in the drive as well. Good, great. I'm sorry, I'm gonna, I'm gonna turn so I can see you all a little bit better. Board Bill 44 creates a Charter Commission, something that the City of St. Louis has not undertaken since 1949. This would be a charter amendment, so this would go to the voters in April to establish this, so nothing will happen unless the voters put it into place. But what this establishes is a nine-member commission. Appointments would come back and forth between the mayor's office and the Board of Aldermen with strict time deadlines, so that we actually meet them to get a board seated by August of 2023. They would meet for the course of a year with regular monthly meetings that would be publicized, would be videoed and recorded by STL TV, and so they, everything would be taking place in public with, with all of the requirements of a public meeting and public documents. They would solicit input from city departments, from citizens, from anyone who has interest in the governing documents of our city, and at the end of that, at month 10, they would report back with some suggestions, if they have any, for updates to the charter. So, reform to the charter could happen through that. Any changes would have to go back to the voters, would have to reach the threshold to change the charter as well. So, what this does is creates an every 10-year process, so automatically this would go into place. As we have not had a commission since 1949, I think we are well overdue to really do some internal work and see what it is that needs to be updated. I would love to take out all of the he/him language in the charter myself and update that a little bit, since we have the Board of Alderwomen now, would be great, and, you know, if there are any other things that departments see as a hindrance to their operations, if there are just places that we frankly need to clean up the charter so it reads a little bit easier. Our, our governing documents should be accessible, should be easy to understand, and should help move our city forward. So, we had a number of hearings, we had four committee hearings on this in Intergovernmental Affairs, and that is how you have the Committee Substitute in front of you. So, I am happy to take questions, if any of y'all have them.
Any further discussion? Alderman from the 24th.
Thank you, Madam President. I would just like to request that my name be added. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Thank you, Madam President. I would just like to request that my name be added.
Madam Clerk, please add the Alderman from the 24th as a co-sponsor, if you would also add me as a co-sponsor as well.
So noted.
Any further discussion? Alderwoman from the first.
Madam President and members of the board, if the Alderwoman from the 8th would yield?
Alderwoman from the 8th, will you yield to the Alderwoman from the first for questions?
Yes. Okay, is this something that needs to be passed today? Because I was reading it, and what I'm missing, and it's always important to me, is diversity. We have, we actually have an ordinance that says when the mayor appoints more than three people, she's supposed to appoint them from all parts of town. She goes out of her way not to do that, and I have raised hell about that with the previous administration and the previous one before that. That's when they stopped doing that. It used to be we would send any big nomination to a committee, and then we would vet them, and if they were not diverse, like you can't have five people from the Central West End and no people from North St. Louis, and under the Slay administration, he started just giving it to the 18th Ward and the 26th Ward, leaving most of North St. Louis out. Is there provision in here that I might maybe miss that talks about, I know appointment, but that it be in different quadrants or different parts of the city, so we don't have the same people?
Sure, so, there, there's nothing enumerated that says exactly, so it's not, it's not set out the same way as like the civilian oversight board with districts or things like that. Because this is going in the charter, and our demographics are changing so much every decade, lining out specifically how we ensure that in here was difficult to come up with that type of language, but what I will say is built in here, the, the extreme exchange of appointments, review, public hearings, back to the, that any appointments have to come through the Board of Aldermen, and they have to come through a public hearing. So, there is our, the opportunity for the board to push back and reject any nominees by the mayor and make sure that we're getting the diversity that we seek. So, it starts, it starts with the Board of Aldermen nominating three appointees or three applicants, mayor's office and selects nine, they come back to the Board of Aldermen for hearings, they're public hearings, then we have to pass them both out of committee and the full board. So, we are the check on the diversity specific requirements there. Because our population has moved so much, if we did it only geographically, we'd run into limitations there within the next 10 years. So, that's, that's really why there's not an enumerated requirement in the, in the commission.
Well, I personally disagree with you as one of the people that's been discriminated against all these years. There are quadrants that we have. Whatever the population, we could have had six, eight, whatever quadrants or whatever it is, and they would have remained the same. I'm not talking about wards. I'm saying that, and then what happens at this Board of Aldermen, when somebody gets their mayor in, then they don't look out to do what's fair. That thing, thing that they thought was fair, now they're just like, we're trying to get Slay's administrations nominations, we're trying to get Mayor Jones's. And so, if we had this in the, the, it's not going to be an ordinance or charter change, then that would be something that would stop, because now what people are going to say is that the charter didn't have it in there, even though we have this ordinance. Right now, we have an ordinance that tops the other ordinance. So, I am not, I'm not going to vote for this, because I'm not comfortable, because I don't believe what you're saying, and I know it's not right, what you're saying, to leave out that we make sure people are from all parts of the city, that doesn't necessarily agree with you. That's why we had all these small awards, is because you had different people who could have their input, and we would never submit something that's, and people came and said, well, we couldn't put women in there because, you know, women's demographic is going to change, and so I don't think we ought to do this, and that's why I'm asking, is there a time, is, does it have to be in so that we can vote on it at a certain time? And, but if it is, I'm not going to support it, because I think we leave out a major thing, which is inclusion, and that is always going to be my thing, that we be included, and to depend on the Board of Aldermen, which right now, when you look at the wards, the way they're drawing, we only got about four black wards, and some of you in other parts of the city saying, well, we're going to pick a black, that is not black leadership. I'm black leadership, because I was picked by black people, and white people didn't have anything to say with, about it. Whether you like it or not, what I say comes out of my mouth, because black people say that to me. When we have these wards and districts and things, and they're drawn north and south, that is so you can have unyielding, too much power over what goes on in North St. Louis. So, when you put a charter like this, and you say, oh, well, it's going to change, it might change, and everybody moves to North St. Louis, you don't know that. But what should happen is we should have had an assurance that we, if we want a Charter Commission, that it includes everybody, and this is exclusionary, and I am opposed to that. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Alderman from the 9th.
Thank you, Madam President. I had thought I'd ask you on this as well, so I'd like to ask again that you add my name to 44 Committee Substitute.
Madam Clerk, please make note of that.
I'd like to just say a couple of things. The Alderwoman from the first ward has put before you something that is extremely important to this community at this time. We have operated in this city for a number of years and decades, and on rare occasions, we did have some semblance of equality to be represented. Giving you an example, when we were looking to have representation to make some decisions here, when they wanted to do better together, we designated X number of alderpersons in each area, and for them to come together and select a representative. So, that meant that different sectors of the city had collaboration on who would go to that body. There is nothing wrong with, if you do nothing else but indicate north, south, east, and west. If you don't want to get specific with wards and/or neighborhoods, at least give the designation, because we can discern who those alderpersons are, who represent those areas, and ask for their representation. It's also critical, too, that if we do nothing else in this process, we must be extremely clear to the public. And this could be interpreted in many different ways, depending on who's sitting at the table, making those important decisions at that moment. So, it has to be very, very clear. I would recommend that we make that change, and ask for other alderpersons' input. I will sit and listen, but I will not vote on it until it's clear for the public. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Alderman from the 3rd.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam President. Members of the board, with the Alderwoman from the 8th, you have a question?
Alderwoman from the 8th, will you yield for questions from the Alderman from the 3rd?
Yes.
Alderman from the 3rd, you're recognized.
Thank you. So, per this board bill, I'll just start off with, you are elected by the people in your ward, correct?
Yeah.
And they elected you to be the legislative leader of that area and to represent them within the City of St. Louis?
Yes.
Under the city charter, you get your power from that charter, which they understand being the only people in the city that actually are accountable through an actual vote from the people are the ones that have that power and the checks and balances from the people to the legislative branch from the charter, right?
Yes, I think they follow, yes.
Absolutely. So, have you talked to your entire ward about having your power that they voted for diminished by putting a commission over it that has the ability to impose a charter change without going to the Board of Aldermen for it?
So, I've talked to.
That's like a yes or no question. I don't want to cut you off.
What's a, I'm an attorney, it's really hard to do yes or no.
It's just, it, well, it kind of is. It's just a yes or no. Have you talked to your community? This is just, okay.
Yes, I have.
So, you've had multiple public meetings about this?
I have talked at multiple neighborhood association meetings.
Have you had a specific meeting just for this, only to ensure that the trash isn't a conversation, the grass isn't a conversation? No, because we're talking about changing the power that you have, that the people come to you every single meeting about, when they ask you for issues, I mean, to solve issues and go to them. when they ask you for issues, I mean, to solve issues and go to them and change this or that. You, I mean, you'll have somebody else pretty much, well, not you have somebody else, but there is a possibility, you know, with this change, that an individual that they have not voted for, somebody that they have not had any conversation with, could be appointing individuals to completely change the scope of your job. Now, that's not what the thought is, but is that not a possibility? Yes or no? It, it comes down to, is it possible for the scope of an Alderman's job to be changed by the charter?
By the vote of a people, yes.
Okay. By the vote of the people, correct? Okay. Now, seeing as we generally, right now, haven't even had one conversation that I believe, as an entire automatic body, as a community, come to the community in the city of St. Louis and say, we're looking at changing the entire way that we could possibly legislate within this city, and giving individuals the power to do so, but we won't even sit down and have a meeting with you about it before we make those changes. Now, if we won't even do that now, there is no way possible that we can expect to be giving these people the time that they need to come out to public meetings during the time where you have this commission meeting, and they're coming up with ideas and changes, and we can't even get the public to, you know, to these meetings to understand that we're trying to make the change, to put these people in power to make the changes that we won't even be privy to, right? Until they come out of their meetings. Like, from my understanding, from what I read, they don't have to hold 10 public meetings.
They do.
10 of them?
They have to, they have to hold a monthly public meeting.
But, I said 10.
They're, well, they're meeting for the course of 12 months. So yes, they have to have at least 12.
Not after they've made the decision?
10 before they've made, before they issued the draft proposal.
Right, but after they issue it. How many times do they have to meet?
There was a required public hearing after-
Just one?
Two, yes, with a, with-
Just one meeting after you put this out to the public and say, we're going to completely change, completely change the charter. Here's this one public meeting, y'all. I hope everybody don't have kids. I hope everybody can show up at 5 o'clock. I hope you can make it to this school. I hope those individuals who are disabled, right? I don't care what you got going on in your life, but you got to make it to this one meeting. That ain't fair. And it's not, I mean, it's, it's not in any way, shape, form, or fashion us supposed to be representatives of other people, looking out for their best interest. Because right now, when we want to have public meetings, and we go through any, we can't change a board bill in one day. You cannot change a law in a day. It takes multiple hearings, multiple hearings. We're giving them the opportunity to have one hearing with the people, but we're held to a higher standard as the legislative branch that the people elected. So we giving other individuals, once again, I read the credentials. I didn't see no PhDs there, right? I didn't see anything there that, that would, would say that significantly, these people have the experience that's necessary to make a charter change. They can change the entire way that we structure board, and why would we do this, number one? When we're getting ready, most of us won't even be here. You won't be here, Alderwoman Rice, and you, you chose to leave. So we're going to put this power in the hands of individuals that, that we know that's a possibility, have no idea of what they're doing. We know this. How irresponsible is that for us? And we're saying we want better representation for the people. We can't, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Sorry. So right now, the citizens can change the charter without us. They don't have to have a public meeting. They don't have to do anything. They just have to gather signatures and put it in front of the voters. So what this is trying to do is bring that process internal to us, make it transparent, make it so that the Board of Aldermen is a part of the nominating process for who sits on that commission. We are staffing them. The city councilor's office would staff them, so that anything that comes through is going to be vetted by our legal authority. So this isn't just some fly-by-night thing that we've created. Other, other cities do this. The county council does this. Every 10 years, the county has a charter commission, and they see, they sit, and then those recommendations go back to the voters. So we are empowering our citizens to bring that process in-house, instead of waiting on a millionaire to change our charter for us.
See, but that's the thing, right? You keep on saying these things like they're equitable. What's the population of the county?
Uh, some million?
About a million people. Only about 125,000 of them look like me. Not the 2.2% look like every other minority within the city of St. Louis. You come to the city of St. Louis, we're like half and half, right? So at any given time that we're talking about what they do in the county, it's never going to be equitable.
Sure.
So, so we, we, I just want us to make sure that what they do there, it, it, I mean, literally, it does not reflect on what we do here. We need to work more and, you know, but that, that's yin and yang, because we're going to go into some other things as well. But we don't operate like the county. And we have more personal relationships, I believe, with our communities, because of the way that the city is set up and the charter itself. So once again, giving individuals power over us and not going to our communities, having public, we have public meetings about everything else. We telling me the full Board of Aldermen can get out of our chambers? We've been on Zoom and everything else. We can't get in one of these high schools and have a conversation about changing these people's entire lives? Because that's what's possibly going to happen. We have to talk about better together, and I'm not, not going to bring that up, because that's one of the most important conversations in St. Louis County. And there is no way that we can propose a charter change and set up a commission that has no idea on what it is that they're supposed to be doing. We have no direction. Question for you, Alderwoman Rice. Do you have any one charter change that you'd like this commission to propose at this particular point?
I mean, the-
Any one? Just, yes ma'am? Yes or no?
Well, I referenced one in my introduction, that I would love to change the gender in the charter, so that it reflects that there are, there are men and women and non-binary folks that are able to serve in elected office or in positions.
Absolutely. That's awesome. What about the second one?
You know, I, I don't know. I don't have an intended second, because I think that this process is up to the people and up to the commission as we, as we seat them, to meet with folks and see what it is that needs to be updated. Because we haven't, we have not undertaken this work internally in a public way since 1949.
How long have you been an Alderwoman?
Four and a half years.
You've been an Alderwoman four and a half years? You want to propose to change the charter that's been here for hundreds of years, older than you've been alive, and you've never even come up with two or three charter changes that you want to make? And the one that you do have, another question. Could you not change that right now? Would, could you not propose that to the Board of Aldermen? Do you, do you, are you suggesting that the members in the Board of Aldermen wouldn't vote for a change like that?
No, I'm not suggesting that at all.
So why wouldn't you propose that?
Because I think that there is, there is a public holistic way to address updates to our charter, and this empowers us to do that.
Is this not the public way to address updates to our charter? Is this not the formal way? Does it not be recorded by STL TV? Is it not being overseen by the people that we put in power with the checks and balances within this room, with the votes that are required to push this out to the general public? Are the people not able to see these particular things happen right on TV live? Do we not have multiple hearings to ensure that the public has a chance to vocalize on how they feel about these things? Why do you feel like it's okay for the public to have one hearing? One? For a charter change? But the Board of Aldermen has to have multiple?
Well, so it, it wouldn't be just one. It's a course of a year, and they have to meet in public.
No, there's a course of a year of meetings. I'm talking about the actual hearing that happens right after they've made the decision.
That is one of them. So-
Well, no, that is the one.
Part of the issue here is that we, as elected officials, we as legislators, have so much on our plates. We are tasked with legislating all aspects. Right. But so what I'm saying is giving, empowering a group of people to meet for the course of a year with the sole direction of looking into this, of not having any other distractions in front of them, to meet with departments, to meet with the city councilor's office, to work alongside them, and figure out what it is that, that we can do. This is, this is good governance.
Alderwoman Rice, good governing is giving the people direction, not dropping them into the box and saying, figure out how to change the charter. Good government would be able to have five to 10 different points that you yourself, no need to be worked out, and we can't work them out without this commission. We got to have direction. And if we're not having any direction, we're going to be spinning around in circles like we've been doing in a cyclical manner for years. All we're doing is putting a Band-Aid on ourselves, saying, somebody has to come from the outside and fix from within, that we can continue to say, we haven't looked at. You've been here for four years, and all the different agendas that you've had, the things that you fought for, this could have easily been one. And 90% of the people in here would have voted for the one thing you just said needed to be changed in the charter. For right this second, I appreciate you. I want to ask Alderman from the 9th to yield for questioning.
Would the Alderman from the 9th yield to questions from the Alderman from the 3rd?
I'm on, I'm on take a shot at it, sir.
Thank you, sir. You support this, correct?
I do, yes.
All right. So would you supporting this? You believe that we need to have this commission. What charter changes do you believe need to be changed right now?
So I think, I think for our picture here, Alderman 3rd, that-
Sir, I don't want to be disrespectful. I just want you to be direct as I can, because we all got, well, not we all got stuff to do. This is the stuff. But what charter changes do, I mean, particularly, are you saying to yourself, yeah, this is a good change, because we need to change this in the charter? I want to be as direct as I can. What do you want to change in the charter?
I'll be absolutely honest with you, is that I have not read the entire charter, but I do know that there are, that there are certain circumstances in there that has been discussed already of, of, you know, non-gendering some of the things in there. That was the quickest one that kind of came up that, that was obviously why the Alderwoman from the 8th is as well. But the whole, the whole plan here is, is to have the charter in front of us and have the opportunity for the public to be able to attend these meetings, to discuss the charter. And without having the charter in front of me, I bet if we printed it up and put it on everyone's desk, we could probably go through there and find some things that are outdated. So the point is, is to find things that are outdated.
Alderman Gunther, Alderman Gunther. Not to cut you off, but I have to. Because I asked you one question, and I just want to know, do you have a specific charter change?
That, that was the, the one that was brought up the board.
Oh, so it's the same thing that Alderman Rice has. So we got two votes right now. We getting somewhere. So easily, once again, we, we got that, so.
We can ask to print up the charter so that we can try, try to-
You ever hopped in an Uber and just told them to go?
Drive what?
You ever hopped in an Uber and just told them to go?
No.
Hopped in Uber? You ever just hopped in an Uber and said, drive?
Yeah, I use Lyft.
No, no, you got to have some direction. The Uber driver's not going to pick you up unless you got somewhere to go.
Right.
Right? We're supposed to be the Uber drivers in the legislative branch, right?
Sure.
We're just telling our people to hop in and just go.
Yeah.
How are they supposed to be successful in one year to learn all of these different things that the charter needs to be changed in? How long you been an Alderman, Alderman Gunther?
Oh, we're on five years, same deal.
Five years, and you haven't even read the whole charter. So how is this person, are these few people we getting ready to put, to be in a commission, supposed to read the whole charter in a year, come up with charter changes outside of the Board of Aldermen's help, and then go put it to the public, give it to the voters, educate the voters, which we didn't even do? And we call that good governance?
I believe that, you know, there were four hearings, I believe, in committee on this, that, that there were some questions that were brought up as well.
You're talking about the, the hearings during the actual months, right? They have to meet once a month, right?
No, I'm talking about, I'm talking about just to get to the point where we are with 44 right now.
I understand. Oh, no, I heard those. I'm talking about-
So I think that there were like an entire Board of Aldermen, because this is an entire legislative change. We ain't talking about one board bill. We're talking about changing the possibility of the entire way that we operate. So we need to take this just as serious as anything that we've ever taken serious and have an entire public meeting outside of these walls, outside of the chambers. Folks just coming off COVID and uncomfortable coming outside.
We going to make a charter change before we can get outside and shake hands with the people? They don't even know what's going on. But I appreciate you. I will yield from now, not yield, but who else supported this? Was it Alderman Stephens? Who said yes? Stevens, I'm, I'm so sorry, sir. My bad. I apologize. I get it wrong sometimes. I do. I get it wrong, but I will apologize. I'm sorry. So Alderman Stephens, and I should have said Stee, dang, man, tripping. Stephens. I'm sorry. With the Alderman? I will, please, Alderman Stephens.
Madam President? Would the Alderman from the 12th yield to the Alderman for the 3rd for questions? You may proceed.
Thank you. Once again, my apologies, sir. Do you have any charter changes that you would like to make right now? Like a wish list, one, two, three?
So is the question, I'd like to clarify the question. Can, can we hear me okay?
No.
Can I hold it? Well, welcome to this game show. So if I could clarify the question, Alderman III. Are you asking for specific charter amendments, or why I am supporting and have worked on this board bill with Alderman, the Alderwoman of the 8th? Because I believe that the purpose of this bill is not to propose charter amendments themselves. It's not to propose specific changes to the charter, even though, I mean, the Alderwoman of the 8th provided one, the Alderman of the 9th provided some, but rather is to establish my understanding and my support of it, based in this understanding, that the board bill, Board Bill 44 Committee Substitute only seeks to establish a commission of citizens, elected, not elected, sorry, selected by the mayor, confirmed by the Board of Aldermen, and so on and so forth, so that they might review, so that citizens, a citizen commission, might review the city charter and make suggestions to the citizenry as a whole on behalf and in tandem with the Board of Aldermen.
No, that's not how that goes. We have no power, Alderman Stephens, none. Did I say that right? Did I mess it up?
That's okay. Call me Bill. That's okay.
That is not the way, that is not the way it goes. We actually don't have the power. They don't have to come back to the Board of Aldermen. They are not working necessarily in tandem with us. We can choose to go in and, you know, go to the meetings and things like that. Of course, that's public. But we, they don't, they don't come back to us. They take it directly to the people.
Yes.
And it goes directly to the vote of the people. Now, once again, you have individuals creating laws that are not working with the lawmakers in the city and have no accountability to the actual people whom voted the individuals in, who appointed these folks. They don't know who we're going to appoint when we get in. I, I think that that's not the best way for us to do business, especially if we don't have a direction. We're dropping these people in a pot, saying, we want you to create charter changes and looking at changing this charter, that we have no direction for right now, which is why I asked you a specific question, because it is about changing the charter. That's what this whole thing is about.
It is, absolutely.
Do you have one specific thing that you believe needs to be changed within the charter?
Alderman Bosley, you'll have to forgive me. I, you know, being a classicist myself and having studied constitutional law and all these things, I, I think that our charter is such an incredible document that far exceeds my ability as an elected official to solely be the, the sole arbiter for its changes. And I do believe, again, having studied Greek and Latin, don't recommend it, very hefty, hefty course load. But, you know, I, I think that this gets us closer to a direct democracy when it comes to this foundational constitutional document.
Can I just get a yes or no?
You know, I, but I, I do want to push back against that, Alderman Bosley, because I think that it's very dangerous to render such weighty decisions.
To ask a question that just says yes or no is like a, do you like blue or red? This is a, do you have one change? Any changes or no changes? It's like, is there one specific, because you can say that. You can say what that one thing is. If I asked you, you know, if you have one thing that you like to focus on within the city of St. Louis, you know, to change, you know, the, the problems that exist within your neighborhood, you'd be like, yeah, but there's other things I like, but I can name one thing. That's what I'm saying. Can you name one thing? I think that's, I think that's a reasonable question.
Well, for the record, my favorite color is green, Alderman Bosley, so neither red nor blue. But, but red and blue are also great colors. So again, I, I take issue as an elected official with questions rendered down to solely yes or no. And I have been infuriating-
You're being evasive, sir.
I'm sorry?
You are being evasive.
No, no, and I'm happy to answer the question.
It is a question!
Yes, but I will not answer yes or no questions, Alderman Bosley, because again, I represent 12,000 citizens. I've got 24,000 ways they think I should do things.
Okay, so do you, all right, well, you know what? With that, I will, understood. I won't ask that question anymore. You know, I- You know, I'd.
And I, I am, I do want to reiterate, sorry for cutting you off, but I am happy to answer questions. I am just personally opposed to, I really.
Yes or no questions?
Take issue with yes or no questions on the basis that they, they render, can we hear me okay? Okay, so sorry, that they render the discussion to a sort of dichotomy, right? A zero or one? And I don't think that's applicable to humanity.
It, but it, I understood, so I'll ask you this question, maybe this, this, would you agree with Alderwoman from the Eighth and Alderman from the Ninth that in the charter there are some terms that they like to, to change in specific and add some other things in there to ensure that, you know, there's equitable, you know, it's, it's equitable language there? Would you agree with things that they are proposing to change?
I seem to recall that we, wasn't there a?
That was in the Board of Aldermen's language. This is, they're talking about changing the charter's language.
Okay. I mean, I believe that is something that should be before the voters, but ultimately, Alderman, to sort of give a blanket response, if you will, I believe that because the, the city charter essentially serves as our constitution, right? We are a non-county charter city within the Missouri revised statutes and so on and so forth. I believe that it is something that it is necessary to get the citizens, the citizenry's support of and, sorry, I'm getting a bit tinny. So I, I do believe, again, that this helps us to get closer to direct democracy where it is one citizen, one vote, one voice. And I, if I had my way, quite frankly, we'd be taking public votes on any major foundational changes, but we are a representative democracy, right? That's why I am elected to represent the 12th Ward, you the 3rd Ward, so on and so forth. So when it comes to specific charter amendments, I would have to defer to the Charter Commission working in tandem with the City Council's office and working in tandem with people.
Alderman Stephens, you are simply saying that you're going to have to go to a Charter Commission of individuals whom don't have any required skill set to talk to them about changing the charter when you're the elected legislative representative for the 13,000 people that you represent? Understood. That I appreciate, I think I want to ask Bretton Orion, I mean, Alderman Orion.
Before I yield.
Yes, sir.
I would like to pose a question to you that you have posed to, to my colleagues.
I think you gotta ask him.
Yeah, I know.
But that's when you get the floor, though. But I, I will, I'll stand up and ask, I'll answer questions for you.
Since we already have this dialogue.
But I don't know if, whenever, I guess I'm done. What you want to do?
The Third, would you yield for a question from the Alderman from the 12th?
I don't want to yield the floor and not get it back, though. You know?
That's fair.
Do you want to come back with your question?
Ha, ha, what you gonna do right now? What's happening?
Diliberate. But for the, for the time, I will yield back.
Okay.
Okay, I got you, though, man. I'm, I'm hurt. Would Alderman Orion yield for questioning?
Would Alderman from the 24th yield to a question from the Alderman from the Third?
Absolutely.
Alderman from the Third, you may proceed.
Thank you, Madam President. I'll tell you, this is very serious for me, and I'm gonna read something to you all and tell you why. But Alderman Orion, I appreciate you all, I appreciate everyone for yielding. You support this as well?
Yes.
Do you have one charter change that you'd like to impose? Or one thing that, well, just one?
I, so, for example, I mean, there, there are numerous things, but for example, I think there are some archaic things in, in the charter. One of the things that I would like to see addressed is the amount of power that the Director of Personnel has under the charter. That's just an example that leads to the city staffing, which affects us all. We need more people to, to pick up the trash, to deal with forestry issues, to deal with streets, and the Director of Personnel has an incredible amount of power over that. And in other similarly situated cities, we don't see the same amount of power given to that position in the charter. That'd be an example of something that a commission like this could.
No, is that the example of what you want to change? You, I'm talking about you as a person.
I would be for changing that, yeah.
Okay, so is there a reason why you have, you have the power to do that right now, correct? In fact, I'm sorry, I went into my line of questioning, the first piece. Do you have a second one?
I think that we could, as my colleagues have pointed out, make the language in the charter more inclusive.
What about a third one?
I think anytime that you have a document that was worked on by previous generations, there's always things to be cleaned up, just in general.
Like what? Because we only, what, we up to two right now? The third one, what, what are we talking about? Because surely if we gonna make charter changes and create a commission, it gotta be a, I mean, a list, so. We got one, we got two, what's the third one? That's, that's been on your mind?
As, as I, as I stated, just cleaning up archaic language.
Like what? Like be thou, shall, what we talking about?
Sure, e- e- exactly. To, to bring the language of the charter into the 21st century.
And you think a commission, you're a lawyer, sir.
Yep.
Would you send somebody to court without legal representation to go holler at a judge?
I think that that's a very different.
Well, it's kind of not, because we sending our people into the ballot box with individuals who've led them there that haven't had, you know, the, the, the legal backing, the actual background to make a legal change, an actual charter change. We talking about changing legislative language.
Yeah, and so, so I think what's, what's kind of neat about this particular piece of legislation is that it, it vests that ultimate power to make those changes with the voters of the city of St. Louis, and I trust the voters of the city of St. Louis.
The voters of the city of St. Louis trust us. That's the thing. You trust them to make a decision that somebody else made, and they trust you to make sure that that person made that decision, but you won't even be in the room for nothing but those four times in that one hearing. It's interesting. And that's not what they voted us in here to do. And we, have you taken the time out to, and, and, you know, and educate your ward, have one meeting just about this bill by itself? So they can go through all of the language and make an educated decision on if they want the ability for that charter to be restructured like this? Because this is restructuring of the charter. The last time this happened, and I'm gonna get into that, which is what we gonna get to, you know, next, but the important thing is, I wanted to see, once again, which I think I got my answer, you don't have five things that you want to change that you can name off the top of your dome.
This, this isn't about what I want to change.
Well, it is about what you want to change, because you represent the citizens in your ward, because if they are coming to you saying, we need to make these changes, and you're telling yourself, I can't make them without a charter change, it is about what you think, because you're thinking for the thousands of people who've told you what it is they feel, and you're gathering those thoughts up, utilizing your brain to represent them. Because if you represent them wrong, they gonna say, what were you thinking?
Sure, and I think that this bill is about a greater thing than any individual politician or any individual ward in the city. I think that this is about ensuring that the people as a whole in the city have a chance to weigh in and discuss whether or not there should be changes.
Do you think they don't have a change, a, 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 an opportunity right now, right this second?
I think that this creates a more inclusive opportunity, because yes, as, as the Alderwoman from the Eighth pointed out, you can propose a charter change, and typically how that happens is someone with a whole lot of money puts forward, goes through the process and puts forward a charter, a charter amendment that the people vote on. This democratizes that process and ensures that there are more people at the table making the decisions on what question should be posed to the voters.
So what you're simply saying, everything you just said, right? I'm, I'm, we, we just gonna, come on, let's be serious, Bret, I mean, sorry, Alderman Orion. What you just simply said, I want you to make sense out of this. I mean, it's, you know, I won't go there. Listen, this won't stop none of the stuff you just said from happening. What you simply just stated, that the billionaires or millionaires that go out here and make it lopsided by being able to spend money on an actual proposal to change the charter, this ain't gonna stop that, because they still can do the same thing. The power of the people is still there right now to this day. If you had the commission there right now, are you telling me that somebody couldn't propose a charter change that's, that's a person who, once again.
Sure.
Who can go out there and get the signatures for the petition? Is that what you're saying? That's a yes or no question?
What if the?
That's a no, sir.
What if the Charter Commission took that out of the charter?
Now, why? Oh, you heard that? Now, listen to that, people. That's what we wanted to get to. I want everybody to hear that. Now, this is what we talking about. Now we get down to the meat of what's actually going on within this room. What, right now, we have is the people's ability this second to propose a charter change at any given time as long as the rest of the voters or percentage of the voters within the city of St. Louis agrees to that charter change. What this proposal simply does, and what you just said, Alderman Orion, is that one of the Charter Commission that is made up of those, what, seven or eight people, remove the 300,000 people's ability in this city who live, or the 100,000 voters that are here?
If the people voted on that, I don't think they would.
Why, why would you even propose the fact that a commission would propose to take away their power like that?
I'm not proposing that.
But you did just say it.
I said it, yeah. I'm not proposing it.
Of course not, but, but you make, but you actually put it out there as a thought of what the commission had the power to do.
Yeah, the, the commission would have the power to propose changes.
And that's why this is scary, sir, because they have the ability to do things like that.
Sure.
That's, that's right. These things are predatory, because everybody, every single person in the city of St. Louis don't have the chance to make it to these meetings. They don't have a chance to get their own one day or one hearing on one month.
I would encourage anyone who disagreed with any proposed charter change to vote no on it. That's why we have the ballot box.
Well, no, we have Alderman here to propose charter changes and give the people all of the information needed to make an actual educated decision when they get to the ballot box. And this removes our ability to do so, because we get in the room at the last minute where the actual proposed.
I disagree with you there.
You know what? Let's actually, let's, let's pull it up, see how many meetings they have after they've actually put the information out and made the proposed changes to the charter.
I, I think ultimately, we just have a fundamental disagreement here on whether the people should be voting on this or not, and I believe that the people should be voting on this.
No, but what you just said is you're potentially, that, that the commission could potential, okay, you know what? I'm going to keep it on what my initial response was, what I was here for. You don't have five proposals, that proposals you want to change. You don't have five charter changes, right?
Again, this isn't about my proposed charter changes.
But that, I just, yes or no question? Just yes or no. You don't have five things you want to change.
I, I, I'm not gonna rattle off things off the top of my head. I, I mean, I think I got into the meat of some very important charter amendments.
It's just a yes or no, and we can move it on.
Again, I, I, I.
Yes or no? Why are y'all being evasive with this yes or no question?
I'm not, I'm not being evasive.
It's just yes or no.
I refuse to reduce this nuanced conversation into a binary.
Well, it just comes down to what I'm asking for is a number. Why can't I ask you for a number? You understand one, two, three, four, or five? I'm just saying, is it one? Is it two? Is it three? Is it four or five? I'm not asking about your idea of what this bill is here for. I asked you specifically, what do you want to propose to change? And have you had any thoughts? Pass to two things that you, that, that you said that you've thought about, because obviously you all have had conversations about those two things, and you brought one thing, which means you have thought about this. I just asked, have you thought about three or four other things? You've been here for what? Three years now? Four?
Three years, yeah.
Three years. So, you know, you have enough time to have a conversation with yourself and other folks. I just wanted to know, do you have a number? Because right now, we got three people who are, are four, and we only got two proposed changes, well, I'm sorry, yeah, two proposed changes. Out of those, so let's, I just want to keep on going down the line. You don't have five, you don't have three?
Again, this isn't about.
Let's get this moving.
This isn't about my proposed changes.
It is about, it's about what I want to know about your proposed changes. No, you're answering the question that you want to answer. You're not answering the question that I'm asking. You're trying to give it to me in a way that you want to respond, which is okay. There's nothing wrong with that. But I am asking for a yes or no, and if that's something you don't want to give, I'll just take the floor back for now and pass it on to somebody else.
Absolutely.
I appreciate you, sir.
Likewise.
Thank you. Yeah, we can go down the line with this, because this is important. I won't keep going. Alderwoman Switzer, are you for this bill as well? I'm sorry. President Green, would Alderman woman Switzer yield?
Would Alderwoman from the 13th yield to questions from the Alderman from the Third?
Yes.
Do you have any proposed items that you like to change within the charter thus far?
Not to put in front of us today.
To have discussion about? Well, of course, I guess that's to put in front of us.
Yeah, I don't have anything to, to put in front of us for discussion. You know, I think it's, can I keep going?
Getting ready to. Are you supportive of the changes in the charter to change some of the gender language that Alderwoman from the Eighth alluded to? Would you vote for that if it was proposed from this board?
Would I vote to change?
Some of the gender-specific language that they like to update?
Sure.
Okay. Would you vote with a good bill that was, you know, out to do a little bit more of balancing the power out between, you know, possibly the Director of Personnel?
I would, I would have to see it in front of me and.
Well, of course, of course. Would you be open to speaking about it, right?
Yeah, I'd be open to speaking about it.
Absolutely. Thank you. That's, that's it. So with, with that being said, it seems like, once again, we got this, this idea that, you know, we're doing this to hurry up and make all of these changes, but y'all don't have no change that y'all want to make. I mean, what, what, what we doing? We just gonna hurry up and do this and then everybody leaving? Some of y'all said y'all not even gonna be here no more. We actually getting ready to destroy. We like crippling the Board of Aldermen and then walking away saying, hey, here's a walking stick. We just reduced all of your heads, whole bottom, all, all of that, that, this wealth of information, all these people that's been here for all these years, a lot of them are leaving. Like, and, and we're, we're saying that we want more individuals to come in and deal with the actual charter changes that need to be made during a time where we're reducing the entire governmental structure? That just ain't smart. We don't know how this next year is gonna be. This next year is gonna be brutal. We don't even have assistance set up. We ain't done nothing to ensure we finna take the load off of the assistants that's working they butts off right now in this room. We have no clue what's getting ready to happen next year, because we ain't structured nothing. We have not, and that's the truth, we haven't done anything. So with that being said, and us trying to figure out how to create charter changes right now in the middle of a government restructuring that absolutely isn't restructured yet? That seems a little bit irresponsible. It, would you, would you disagree?
No, I do not think this bill is irresponsible.
No, not that. I'm just, I'm just, okay, well, you know what? There it is. There it is, point blank. We'll leave, okay, you can.
I'm just in line now.
Okay, got you. All right. So Charter Commission, last time we was in commission, it was what? What, did you say, 1959, right? 1949? So I will say this, and I'll, and I'll stop right now, and I let, let my elders pop in her. Historically, you know what? I'm gonna say this. It is not a good idea for the government to be this unorganized. We are very unorganized. And we're simply saying that it's a good idea to put other people into an unorganized system and then tell them to reorganize it from the top down to the bottom, and we can't even handle our stuff from within? Like, we got problems, serious problems. This is not the right time for this. This isn't saying that there isn't one, but this ain't it. Not right now. In just a few months, there'll be totally different people sitting in this room. We gotta leave them with something better than what we leaving them with right now, because all of this, this is not giving them a step up and a step forward in what's next to come and what they have to receive. All of our constituents are counting on us. They're counting on us to do better. So with that being said, I'll yield for now.
Alderwoman from the 13th?
Was anyone else in line before me?
I think you were next.
Okay.
Alderwoman from the 20th, Alderwoman from the 19th.
Thank you so much, President Green, members of the Board of Aldermen. Lots been said so far about what this Charter Commission could do, would do. I think the one thing that has always stood out to me in talking about this effort is the idea that more people in the city have an opportunity to speak and to discuss a document that, you know, hasn't been updated in a very long time. It is something that guides our city. You know, we've had, over and over again, it seems, these sort of one-off charter changes that go in front of the voters but don't necessarily take into context the rest of the charter and how those different pieces fit in. I think what this allows to happen is a sort of bottom, you know, top-to-bottom overlook at what the charter is, what it says, what it does, and have people in the city of St. Louis involved in making some suggestions on what those changes could be. Like we do at the Board of Aldermen, we would, you know, put it in front of, that would be put in front of the voters, and the people would decide. You know, I am somebody who does trust voters. I do believe that people think critically about what they're going to do. Is it always the right? You know, do we have hindsight occasionally? Yes, I think so. I think what this bill allows to happen is to look through the document and find where that hindsight might, you know, might be able to be applied and to make some changes. Or, you know, it could be that they come up with no changes, and that's what happens. I mean, we just, we wouldn't know, and no matter what, it'd be put before the voters. I am looking forward to see an amendment that perhaps makes the selection process of these people more equitable. I think that is always a good thing to look at, and I appreciate the suggestion to do that. I think that would improve the bill, and I appreciate the chance to get to talk today. I yield back.
Thank you. Alderwoman from the 20th?
Thank you, Madam President, and members of the board. I support this bill, and I want to speak to why I do. You know, we have a very archaic charter. It hasn't been revisited in decades. What the Charter Commission does, and I think, and I really have to, you know, commend the Aldermen from the 3rd for bringing up some important issues, the Alderwoman from the 1st for talking about and really bringing forth a meaningful amendment change to make the commission more inclusive very specifically. So, but it is really incumbent upon us as a legislative body to revisit our charter. You know, I can specifically point out some things that we need to address in the charter, like removing, you know, references to feather renovating, furriers, hucksters, mattress renovators. I mean, these are things that are in our charter. You know, we have, the city has the ability to require milk dealers to obtain permits to guard off of, against unwholesome milk. References to unwholesome milk, I think, maybe. These are some things that are, quite frankly, a little bit embarrassing for a city to have as part of our charter. There is a lot of work involved in reviewing a charter. This should be done by more than just the Board of Aldermen. I really, truly believe we should have input from our university's best practices. These are things that a Board of Aldermen, especially one that's part-time, as we are legislators, part-time legislators, haven't had the capacity to do. You know, I've been down here for eight years, and I haven't removed the reference to unwholesome milk from our charter. You know, because every little change that we decide upon would have to go before voters, just like any change that this commission would come up with. You know, so there are lots of checks and balances here. I believe that it's our duty as legislators to come up with things, to make our city policies, laws, to make our city a better place for our residents. And that is an enormous authority and power that we have as legislators. I think in no way appointing a Charter Commission to review the charter, in no way does that diminish the awesome and incredible power that we have as Aldermen, as legislators. It's truly incredible, the amount of authority that the voters give us by voting for us. And we will continue to have all of that power as legislators, in addition to bestowing upon several members of the general public to review the charter in a wholesome, holistic way on a regular basis. Most major cities have a citizen-led opportunity to review the document that describes how their city is governed, the charter. And we should join many other major cities in doing the same, empowering our public to make recommendations, to update the charter as our citizen see fit. We haven't done that holistically as a board, and I certainly don't think that we should be ashamed of that. We have a lot of things to do on a very regular basis. All of us spend an enormous amount of time at this part-time job. All of us do. We all deeply, deeply care about our communities. But in order to really take a look at the charter in its entirety requires a concerted effort and really requires a very specific charge to do so. And I do believe having a Charter Commission where we have some appointed members, you know, the Board of Aldermen, you know, we should be, whoever is down here should be, you know, participating very, very, very constructively with that appointed board to make sure that the charter, the changes that are being required are things that would be supported by the Board of Aldermen. You know, and that way, when those changes go before voters and they decide whether or not that Charter Commission was crazy and come up with some stupid stuff, or really, really put before voters some changes that are good. You know, the voters will ultimately decide on whether or not the changes that the commission recommends would be passed or be thrown away. But this is an opportunity to have a public discussion, hopefully include some members of the academic, general public, universities, and others that can participate and help that those seated commissioners move forward in the best way for our community. I do think that there's reason to be concerned. I think the Aldermen from the 3rd, you know, rightfully so, is concerned about who's going to be down here. You know, we are presenting something for our future board. I think it's very important that this board, as we see it today, did not seat the commissioners, and I'm grateful to the sponsor for putting in some additional time as we consider it so that this board, that's going to be out of date here, you know, there's 28 of us, there'll be 14 of us soon, that it's not us that's determining who's sitting on that, that it's a future body, that re-envisioned body. I think it's also important to recognize that, you know, this commission would be seated in 2023. They would have public meetings for a full year. Hopefully, we'll all participate in that public discourse. They could come up with some pretty stupid stuff, quite frankly. And, you know, the question was whether or not those recommendations should come back to the board for vetting. And I think that that's a reasonable question to ask. It's something I asked, it's something we continue to ask. I think we could continue to ask that question. But, you know, to give citizens the right to put before voters their recommendations without input from the board is also an awesome power. It's an awesome power for that commission. And I think, you know, I think there's reason to consider that as the way to go. You know, giving us the power as Aldermen to then, you know, revisit any changes that go into the charter. If the commission and voters decide on something, the legislative body will still have the authority to make an additional change, change it after that. We can continue to make changes to our charter by way of citizen input, the Charter Commission, the petition process, which is also a very important process, but one that takes a lot of time, and I think it really asks a lot of citizens to come up with, and of course, the legislative body. And that's a very good thing. I think we haven't, you know, envisioned our charter as a living document the way we really could. And this can really open that conversation to talk about ways in which we can make our charter more inclusive, make it, you know, bring it up to speed, and also, in, you know, in theory, talk about how we govern ourselves and, you know, what it looks like as a structure of government and how we can start to address some of those issues to pull us in to modern times, quite frankly. We're really outdated in a lot of ways. I think to say no to this would be to say, you know, doing it the way we've done it is okay, that's not okay. We really haven't had the time here at the Board of Aldermen to make all these changes, to remove the, you know, horse traders and all the goofy junk that's in the charter and has remained there as we've all served. I myself have served and not addressed these things, recognizing what a heavy lift it is to make individual changes to our charter. And again, I just want to kind of point out that this is something that many, many major cities have in place, a regular revisiting of the charter, and something that would not diminish in any way the incredible, awesome power bestowed upon this body to make laws, to make recommendations to voters on charter changes, and to move our city forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderwoman. Alderwoman from the 19th?
Thank you, Madam President. So let me give you a little history. Our board now consists of over 60% of the members have been here in less than five And in that number, most of them had not lived in the city of St. Louis previous to their election to this board but a couple of years. So let me give you a little bit of history. Yes, we have addressed many of the things that we've talked about today. Through the 2004 process, it lasted three years. There was approximately $8 million spent on the process. The public was totally involved, and the city and the county and the region was involved. We looked at every aspect of government's ability to provide services, how people were elected, how we should look at school districts, how they should be designated. Number one, we have too many in the state of Missouri. We looked at everything involving how to run a better quality-of-life governance system. Then we'll go on to 2004. Members that were elected in the city of St. Louis from various departments looked at how we were governing. So they looked at how we could merge departments, eliminate departments. Money was spent to try to educate the public. But you got to remember, our average public does not have time to listen to our nonsense the way that we present it, okay? We don't do it in a way where people can understand it. We want to do it fast, quick, in a hurry, and limited, and they don't be bothered with us, okay? So then we looked at that. There were some charter amendments suggested. I think all of them failed but one. They were looking at merging city departments like License Collector and, I think, Collector Revenue, and it was about four or five of those kinds of things. We were also looking at, in the 2004 plan and talking in that plan, that because the city is so much smaller, it is not the 800,000-plus people anymore, that maybe we need city management governance because that might work better for the city of St. Louis. We also were talking about and looking at, did we need to elect as many elected officials who kind of serve the same purposes and are unnecessary purposes? So that was talked about as well. Even when we were talking in the discussion of reducing the number of wards, now that's been, what, it was 2012? We even talked about there's no need to elect a president of the Board of Aldermen. If you're only going to have 14, you can just elect among yourselves who you wanted to be the leader. There were a number of things that were discussed in reducing the Board of Aldermen and many ways on how you service this board. There's been many discussions, but you know, one of our major problems that we have, nobody talks to anybody. That's a huge problem. And I don't think anybody in here has ever called me. I did not give you everything that I knew because there's no reason for me to keep it to myself. So there are a lot of things why I won't vote for this today because I think it could be better. If we do nothing else, the designations need to be clear about where people are elected from, and we need to give more guidance as far as the principles that we look at. Because if we don't get to the core of it, and I respect the Alderwoman from the 20th, because there's a whole lot of crap in there, okay? You got to remember, when this city was formed, the intent was only for rich men to run the city, okay? And they didn't care about whether you were full-time or not because they just made decisions behind closed doors, and that's how the city was run. And you could not be a member of the governing body if you were not a business owner and definitely no women. So, we know it's antiquated. That's a given. But we need to put some more specific in that document because we don't know. There's a possibility that none of us will be here in 2023. That's a possibility. Or maybe only two or three, and they may not have that much history. So I think you need to just take a little time. I see some folks over there clicking and working, but I think you need more than what time we got today. And I'm gonna read this and see if it clears up some of it. But we need to make sure that the document is full and appropriate and fully functional in order to get the job done. That's all. Thank you.
Alderwoman from the 17th?
Thank you, Madam President, and members of the board. I wanted to see if the Alderwoman from the 8th would yield to questions.
The Alderwoman from the 8th?
Well, I'm gonna have.
The Alderwoman from the 8th yield to questions from the Alderwoman from the 17th?
Yes.
Thank you. I just wanted to make the point again. I was on the, I'm on the committee that was looking at this particular board bill, and I would just want to express again, and I feel that Aldermen from the 3rd mentioned this, is that, you know, I feel that in the city, that the commissions all need to be educated and oriented and have training. And I asked in the hearing to have some of that language put into this board bill. I do believe it is important to codify it and put it into writing. And so I'm going to ask again, I would like to have language in the board bill talking about how we're going to train, facilitate, and orient these individuals from the public, the residents, so that they can perform their duty better in terms of what they come up with changes, et cetera, for the Charter.
Sure. Alderman, I appreciate the conversation, again, both in committee and now. I, if there is a simplified way to include that in the charter, that, because this is a charter amendment, so I don't want to get hyper-specific about. If you have language, I am happy to insert that. I don't have that language off the top of my head. I did copy you on a draft of a resolution that I was hoping would walk alongside this because I think that there is, there's absolutely value to pulling in research resources. We have incredible academic institutions that we can use, that we can utilize for research, and over the course of the next 10 years before the next one of these, I would hope that this is an ongoing conversation in the city. And so to establish those relationships, I don't know if, I don't know how to fit that in this particular board bill, but if you have language, I'm happy to take a look at it and see if we can amend it today.
So I think we could try to work into that language today, then. Yeah, I would like to work in that language today.
Okay, do you have a draft?
You know, I didn't realize because we were going to work on that resolution, so I think we should just work on this right now.
Okay, so I have another amendment. I am happy to bring, if you want to start work on drafting that, then I'm happy to bring that as a part of this. I do have another amendment I need to introduce for this at the moment, so.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Are you ready?
Yeah.
Okay. Alderwoman from the 8th?
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board. You should have in front of you Amendment Number 1 to Board Bill 44 Committee Substitute. So thank you to the Alderwoman from the 1st for the language here. What it does is insert on page 4, line 13, 2, Section 1, Item 1C. So as the mayor would bring their nine nominations to serve on the Charter Commission, said nominations to the Charter Commission shall be made so as to provide for a total geographic representation of residents of this city. Geographic representation shall mean that three nominations from the mayor shall come from the geographical area south of Arsenal to the north, to the city limits to the south, extending to the east and west city boundaries, and three nominations from the mayor shall come from the geographical area of Page. Oh, I see what you're saying. Yeah, you're right. We had to strike that. Okay. Well, a little bit of a Skirvener's error on this here. So Page of, north of Page and then Page to the south would be the southern boundary there. I'll tweak that. You're right. Okay, north of Page. So take out that first Page and. So the geographical area of north of Page to the south, extending to the east and west city boundaries, and three nominations from the mayor shall come from the geographical area of Arsenal. Oh, we did that again. Of north, north of Arsenal to the area north of Page. Well, now I just, I thought we had it. We didn't. Okay, I take that back. I need to amend the language just a little bit more. So if there's more conversation, I'm going to withdraw that.
All right. Alderman from the 12th?
Yes, I just wanted to speak on the bill for a sort of clarification. There we go, okay. And I will be brief because I'm worried this button is about to go at a very calorie-heavy Thanksgiving. In addition to rising in support of this board bill, I do want to rise in support of the city's farriers, Alderwoman the 20th. We are blessed to have farriers even to this day, so I'm just poking a bit of fun at your example from the charter, adding some levity. But to hopefully, and hopefully adequately respond to the concerns of the Alderman the 3rd regarding the sort of eligibility of the selection of the nominees and more so of their ability to undertake this monumental and decennial operation. We did at one point, Alderman the 3rd, we did at one point on Pages 3 leading into 5 have, yeah, so Page 3, Line 21, under eligibility criteria subsection 2, or Section 2 subsection Between that and subsection 2, we at one point did have a prohibition on previously-elected officials or previously-appointed commissioners or previously sort of individuals that had worked with the city from serving on the board. And I will say that in committee, we, the Alderman the 7th and myself actually pushed back against that because we do have institutional knowledge that is very relevant to this mode, to this mission. So that's not apparent in the bill before us because it's been struck, but we did make a concerted effort to further open the eligibility pool via ex officio members, be they voting members, be they XYZ. So there is capacity for individuals with PhDs in relevant areas of policy. There is capacity for those of us that have served at the board that may not continue serving at the board, or so on and so forth, to be a part, a direct part of this initiative and this process and this commission, again, either ex officio, so non-voting, or voting. So I just wanted to clear that point because that was a stickler for me as well, like, well, hey, I mean, I know pretty well acquainted with the city charter, and even though I wouldn't support necessarily taking out our esteemed farriers here in the city of St. Louis from it, you know, we absolutely, as the elected representatives of the city of St. Louis, do have valuable input. So I just wanted to make that small, little clarification point. Again, that may not be sufficient for some of my colleagues here. I absolutely understand that. But with that, I yield back, Madam President. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Okay. The woman, okay.
I'd like to recommend that the bill moves back to the informal calendar. Give us a week. I see us still working, and I think it's better to take that moment.
It would be up to the bill sponsor to put it on the informal calendar.
And then my other comment, my other comment I wanted to say was, I understand Alderwoman from the 20th, what she was saying, but I think people need to realize that you're giving residents something that they have no knowledge of, and so we just willy-dilly or say, oh, give it to the residents, and they're not. give it to the residents and they're not to do. No, they don't. They don't. And you're putting them in bad situations. This charter was one of the most racist charters that's ever been put together because Missouri is the most racist state there is. And so everybody's thinking it's all willy-dilly and it's fine, and it's not fine. And so I agree with the Alderwoman from the 19th and the 2nd of the Alderman from the 3rd, we need to put it on hold and go back because we need to rethink this and quit just giving stuff to our residents and say, oh, here, take this and deal with it. No. That's how we got these crazy laws out here now because you put stuff on the ballot and people don't even understand it. Right. So come on, let's quit, let's take her business. We're here to take her business. It's not no game with us. And I agree with Alderwoman Peel, and she probably will look at me like I'm crazy. But you do need to educate these residents. You can't put stuff in front of them and say, oh, vote for this, and then they don't even know what's going on. That's not fair to the residents of this city. So please, let's not do this. Let's not rush on this. This is something very serious, and we need to address it in a calm and ethical way, and it's not all right and it's not all left. Let's come in the middle and try to see how we can fix this. Thank you, Madam President.
Alderwoman from the 8th?
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board. I really appreciate the conversation today. This is, this is what I was hoping for. I'm grateful that we were able to bring this up and have a robust conversation on it today. And we've got some amendments that it is clear that need to come onto the bill before we move it forward. I wanted, I want to reiterate, you know, part of, part of the impetus for me for bringing this forward was Proposition R. Because I, you know, none of us were a part of drafting that thing. That came to us, that told us how we were going to do our jobs, and the public wasn't a part of drafting that. They, you know, when someone walks up to you at the grocery store and says, hey, sign this thing to mess with the Board of Aldermen, you say, sure, sign me up, right? So I want, the whole thing here is let's bring this in-house, let's bring this in a transparent way. I really appreciate the Alderwoman from the 1st working on language for geographic representation. I think that that is, that is a great suggestion to put into here. I'll work with the Alderwoman from the 17th on some other language about training and who's, who's supporting this. The city councilor's office is going to be working with this to staff, and I agree, I think the rest of our boards and commissions could use the education as well as we, as we move things forward. So I just want to thank you all for the conversation today. This is born out of my frustration as an older person with the amount of fires that we put out on a daily basis, giving the charter and all of the changes that are needed, the time and attention that it deserves, has to come from outside of us. And we are, we are empowering our city in a democratic way to really move some things forward. So I appreciate all the conversation, and Madam Clerk, I would like to move Board Bill 44 Committee Substitute to the informal calendar.
All right. Aldermen from the 25th, then?
My apologies, Madam President. I was helping with an amendment over there.
That's quite all right.
I've lost my place since I was over there helping out.
We need to go back to Board Bill 116 Committee Substitute for suppression of rules.
Suspending the rules for the purposes, okay. Thank you, Madam President. I rise to suspend the rule, to move to suspend the rules, to move Board Bill 116 Committee Substitute to the regular perfection calendar.
It's been moved by the Alderman from the 25th, seconded by the Alderman from the 9th, that we suspend the rules for the purposes of moving Board Bill 116 Committee Substitute to the regular perfection calendar. Correct. Yes.
Oh, okay. Just want to make a call.
Yes. 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 She asked for it to be passed out before we go on break, so. Alderwoman Rice. Right. Any further discussion? Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Alderwoman Tyus. Alderwoman Middlebrook. Alderman Bosley.
Aye.
Alderwoman Evans.
Aye.
Alderman Page.
Aye.
Alderwoman Iglesias.
Aye.
Alderman Carter. Alderwoman Rice.
Aye.
Alderman Gunther.
Aye.
Alderman Ballmer.
Aye.
Alderman Lappy. Alderman Stevens.
Aye.
Alderwoman Switzer.
Aye.
Alderwoman Howard. Alderman Odenberg.
Aye.
Alderwoman Peel. Alderwoman Todd.
Aye.
Alderwoman Davis.
Aye.
Alderwoman Spencer. Alderwoman Keys.
Aye.
Alderwoman Walker.
Aye.
Alderman Vaquero.
Aye.
Alderman Orion.
Aye.
Alderman Cone.
Aye.
Alderwoman Clark Hubbard. Alderwoman Boyd.
Aye.
Alderman Grass.
Aye.
President Green.
Aye.
Alderwoman Middlebrook.
Aye.
Alderman Carter. Alderwoman Howard. Alderwoman Peel.
Aye.
Alderwoman Spencer.
Aye.
Alderwoman Clark Hubbard. 25 aye votes.
All right, your vote, you sustain the motion. Madam Clerk, could you please place Board Bill 116 Committee Substitute on the regular perfection calendar?
So noted. Board Bill 116 introduced by, I'm sorry, 116 Committee Sub introduced by Alderwoman Clark Hubbard, and ordered is recommended by the Board of Exman and Apportement, appropriating a portion of funds received under the American Rescue Plan Act of 2021, authorizing certain expenditures of such funds to the extent received, authorizing contracts and other documents to expand the funds to the extent received, containing the separability clause and containing the emergency clause.
Alderwoman from the 8th, you're recognized on the perfection of Board Bill 116 Committee Substitute.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board. It moved to perfect Board Bill 116 Committee Substitute.
It's moved by the Alderwoman from the 8th, seconded by the Alderman from the 25th, that we perfect Board Bill Number 116 Committee Substitute. You may proceed, Alderwoman.
Thank you, Madam President. Board Bill 116 is our working families piece of the, the next round of ARPA funding, has a whole bunch of really great programs in there. There was a robust discussion in HUDs this week, and I am happy to take questions.
Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Alderman from the 16th?
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board. Will the Alderwoman from the 8th yield for questions, please?
The Alderman, Alderwoman from the 8th yield to the Alderman from the 16th for questions?
Yes.
You may proceed, Alderman.
Thank you, Alderwoman. I think this board bill has a lot of good uses in it. I think this isn't going to be a major surprise to you that the one-line item that exists around the basic guaranteed income probably is drawing the most questions to this board bill from the members. And I was wondering if you would accept a friendly amendment to eliminate that line item for now in the board bill, and then we can proceed with, which I think will probably agreed upon uses for the balance of that, and we can revisit that. Because I think there's a lot of questions that still remain, I know myself and other members have asked for, around the cash assistance that was given out in one of the first rounds of ARPA funding. I think there's still a lot of lingering questions around where those data points exist, and if they have moved the needle around good public policy. So the question is, would you entertain a friendly amendment, which I have drafted in everyone's Google Drive, simply to eliminate the guaranteed basic income provision, to be revisited at a later date?
Thank you, Alderman. I don't actually consider that a friendly amendment. I, this, the, the basic income pilot that is included in this bill is a key element of supporting our working families and getting 440 folks in the St. Louis area, $500 a month for 18 months, is a total of $9,000 that would, would go towards folks with children in our schools. And what we know of the child tax credit, the expanded child tax credit to people who didn't otherwise qualify for it this last year, it made a world of difference. And so I really think that this is, this is something that we can do with this money, and I think it's something that we should do. So I will also note that the sponsor of the bill is here, and so if you would like to continue this conversation with the Alderwoman from the 26th, I would yield to that as well.
Thank you. Do I still have the floor, Madam President?
Yes, you still have the floor.
Will the Alderwoman from the 26th graciously yield for questions?
The Alderwoman from the 26th yield to questions from the Alderman from the 16th?
Absolutely. Let me catch my breath because I done ran through the airport like OJ to get here. And that's what I'm saying, you know, everybody in the world knows this is not how I come to a board meeting, so I didn't know all of this was gonna come up, but when I got the word, look, I did, I ran a whole marathon to get here, and look at God, I made it here right on time. I mean, that ain't no bug, God, so come on. Yeah, I yield to your question.
Alderman from the 16th, you may proceed.
Thank you, Madam President. Alderwoman, I appreciate it. You made it here just in the nick of time. The question is, would you accept a friendly amendment that which you and I discussed earlier, which is simply striking out line item 9 as follows, that the word and figure Department of Human Services, guaranteed basic income, $5 million, to be revisited? I think the rest of these dollars, the rest of these provisions sail today. I think this is the one that's drawing the most questions and the one, I'm not sure the page on that, Alderwoman. But that's, that's the question, and I'd be happy to introduce this amendment, but I think if I could get your blessing on it, we could be more efficient.
Oh, my goodness. Now you're gonna use the word blessing. That, that might be a stretch for that, but, and I know that me and you didn't talk about it. What happened was I started hearing about it, so I text you as soon as we landed and said, you know, what was going on, and because you sent me a picture of it. And so that's where that came from. It wasn't a discussion, I just want to make that part for clarity.
Sure.
But I guess just to simply say it, no, I wouldn't entertain this amendment.
Okay. Madam President, I move to introduce Amendment Number 1 to Board Bill 116 Committee Substitute.
It's been moved by the Alderman from the 16th, seconded by the Alderwoman from the 19th to introduce Amendment Number 1 to Board Bill 116 Committee Substitute. Alderman, you may proceed.
Thank you. This, this, the amendment simply states, "To amend said bill as follows," I'm beginning of page 1 of Exhibit A to Board Bill 116 Committee, to Board Bill 116 Committee Substitute, line item 9. Strike out line item 9 as follows. Strike out the words and figures, Department of Human Services, guaranteed basic income, $5 million.
Yeah, the amendment was wrong too. I was gonna say that because I didn't, but I didn't know he was gonna get this far with it.
So point of order, we, it's, yeah, the amendment was made to a previous version, I believe, then, right?
Okay, so do you want to remove your second and remove your motion and correct that?
I will remove that. Well, who's seconded it?
Alderwoman from the 19th, do you want to remove your second?
I can remove my second. Yes.
Okay. I will remove my motion, and Alderwoman, if I, or Madam President, if I could continue to hold the floor while I get a clerk or the board attorney to help me with the amendment to the appropriate version of Committee Substitute, which would be the treasurer's office and not the Department of Human Services. I believe it's still the same line item. Okay. Thank you all.
It's me trying to catch my breath.
Can we continue discussion while he's doing it?
Would you be willing to yield the floor to continue discussion?
Absolutely.
Okay. Alderwoman from the 19th?
Thank you very much. I didn't have a lot to say. When we were talking about this, I was listening to everybody, and I had an opportunity to take some time and review all that was listed for comments under Twitter and Facebook and the Post-Dispatch articles and everybody else's articles. But what was most telling to me is when I went back and listened to our chief of stat as he explained this proposal. And believe it or not, all the things that he listed as an assistant to any individual who had needs in this region is the reason why we don't need the $500. He listed every agency that provides services. He listed everywhere you can get rent assistance. He listed everywhere you could get food assistance. He listed the places where the different, I think it's been three adjustments to food stamps on the federal level. He introduced, he talked about the earned income tax credits for children. He also talked about the ability for these utility bills to be paid. And then I jumped over to somebody else's page, and I saw where all the utility companies have introduced additional assistance, aside from the assistance that you get from everybody else for your utility bills. I saw where the state level has some assistance for utility bills. And I, and I was looking at all these different ways and all these different departments and services from the federal down to the local level, and all our non-private and civic organizations and donations. People can even get cars now. Did you know that? You can get a car for free, and they make sure that the money is made available for your car insurance. I didn't know all that was out there, so I did my homework. And I'm like, okay, and our $500 is gonna do what? You see, you're putting a Band-Aid on something that don't even need a Band-Aid. That's what we're talking about. When you want to help somebody, you put things in place for them for the permanent quality of life elevation, not a temporary Band-Aid. You see, now the additional workforce development programs are out here. The additional's free, free. Half of our nursing schools, you can come for free now. There are so many training programs that are free. There are now corporations who say, you don't need any experience, we will train you on the job, you don't need a degree, you don't even have to have had six months of work experience. Come on. That's helping people. Get them the information, get them what they need to know where to help themselves. $500 is not gonna do that. I'm talking about permanent, I'm not talking about a Band-Aid. Because we got 99 systems and organizations out here from the federal and state level that got everything you need for free. There's even a program that not only pays your utility bills in the rear, but also pays it up for the future. It can't get no better. So let's, let's deal with reality. Let's stop, let's stop doing what we've been doing. Because that $500 is just like when Trump wanted his name on the checks that were sent out the first time, then he realized that nobody was gonna see his name because it's direct deposit. So I mean, come on now. Let's get real. Let's deal with people in a very sincere way, in a, in a full way to improve their quality of lives, not a temporary Band-Aid. Thank you.
Alderwoman from the 26th? Or Alderwoman from the 1st?
Thank you, Mr. President, Madam President and members of the board, okay. I don't disagree with what the Alderwoman from the 19th said, and I want to take it further. Any money going to the treasurer's office, I would never support because he is a, you're talking about a liar. I was called a ball-faced liar a few weeks ago. But this guy came to our committee, and it's in our committee hearing, and talked about providing information, which I asked for, which was just very benign information. Give me a list of those people who had gotten $500 and by ward. First, I started with the mayor's office, and they yanked me around for two or three months. Then I, the treasurer said, well, I have that information. We have a city charter, there's a part of the city charter that says the Board of Aldermen Committee. Any committee has a right to any information in any of all these places. If you give it to the mayor or the comptroller, you have to give it to the president, and you have to give it to the committees at the board. And it's so nice to look and see Pam Ross, what you all don't know is Pam Ross used to work for SRA. to work for Shrews, Alderman, Shrewsbury, who became President of Shrewsbury. And he passed this because he got so frustrated with asking, so he took, and we changed the charter, because we got so frustrated with asking for information that all mayors try to hide from the Board of Aldermen, even though we are the oversight and we're the ones that need to write legislation. And I didn't start out as this being a got you. I started out with just, because I got so many questions from people in my ward saying, who got the $500? I don't know anybody who got it in my ward. Ms. Tyus, can you find out? No, I can't find out. I can't find out because they try to cover it up. And the more you try to cover up, then I want to know. So then the Treasurer lied to my face in the committee and said, oh, I'll get that to you in a couple of weeks. Well, I started in May. This is December the 9th. I have not gotten that information. While I was in the hospital getting surgery, I did see the mayor, ta-da, this is successful because she's trying to undercut the information I'm trying to get. I then sent a subpoena, had our board attorney do a subpoena, and the president said she wasn't going to sign it because everything is not adversarial. The minute an elected official tells the Board of Aldermen, we can't have data. Now, this is one, I'm sorry, he's not elected. He was appointed. I was elected since 1991, so I'm the elected official, big dog in the room, if you really want to talk about it, where the people have said it. But here we are, months and months later, we don't have any data. Now you're coming back with another $500. No, I'm not supporting that, and I'm certainly not supporting it to the Treasurer. And what's so good is, we're going to do a writ of mandamus, which we're going to win. The last person who did it was Alderman Bosley, but not you. My original friend, my original friend, which he made the comptroller have to do some things. You cannot hide data from the Board of Aldermen. So I am never going to support anything until we stand up as a body and say, we have a right to have data. And for the president not to sign a subpoena saying that it's not adversarial, it became adversarial the day you told me you were going to give it, and you didn't. And I also cited the charter that says I can have a right to have it. So my problem is, now we're going to give some more. We don't know what's going on. We should get rid of us. We should not have any Aldermen. Because if our job is just to do what the mayor says, get off the Board of Aldermen, I'll be the main one still raising hell. I don't care what mayor it is. It's been six, this is my sixth one. But we have a right to do our jobs. So when you tell me I can't have information, I would never send any more money. If I could, anything the Treasurer brings me that has to come to the board, I'm not supporting it. I'm not going to support it. And he came a couple of weeks ago, and when I asked him about it, he smirked and said, oh, you don't have it? Oh, because he was playing in this little game that they're playing. I'm not playing a game like that. And all of you all who support this, you're supporting us not getting information. So then don't complain to me when we don't have information, because you know when I get it, I share it with all of you all. The president asked me, why are you going to release this publicly? First of all, that was insulting. Because I've been doing this way before she got here. And I've never released any different information that was private to anybody except for the members of the board, which all of you all mostly got elected. I don't know, did any of you all get appointed? I guess not. So you are all elected, so you have more right than the appointed elected official to have this information. And we have to stop being scared to be members of the Board of Aldermen. We have to demand our rights. I look out for each and every one of you, and I'm looking at the Alderman from the 28th. When the Treasurer was messing with him, the first thing I told him, and I said to the Treasurer, I'm going to be looking out for the Alderman from the 28th. He can tell you that. And that was about a parking issue. Okay? And that's what I'm supposed to do. And we're not supposed to be giving money to somebody who do not, that he's already showed us, he doesn't respect us. No. And I also agree with the Alderwoman from the 19th about all these other resources out here. The people in my community still want to know where the original $500 went to. So if I can't tell you where the original, I'm not putting another one on top of it or another one. Tell me where the original $500 went to. Give it to me. And I started out just wanting, is it the number by each ward? They refused to do that and told me they did not have the ability to put things out by ward. And you ought to get out of office, because everything we get is by ward. So if you, Mr. Treasurer, who lied, and I'm saying you lied, I'm not making it up like the Alderman from the 28th, I'm sorry, the 20, the 12th did about me. He, it is on Zoom for him saying he was going to get it. And I cannot in good conscience go back to my people and say, we just sent another 500, when we really don't know, except for what the mayor says, where the money has gone. And at this point, she does not have my full faith that she's telling me the truth. Because when you're telling me the truth, you don't have a problem with showing me and other elected officials what happened. When you're having these big press conferences saying, oh, this is successful, but you don't provide what I ask you, it is not successful. And it's insulting to this board. And we have plenty of ways for many things for people can do. I'm one of the people that I started to raise heck about. We gave, we wouldn't let people evict. I'm a landlord. Right now, because of the city's archaic rules, which were ruled unconstitutional, we are owed about $12,000, $15,000 from people who didn't pay their rent. And then when, soon as the Supreme Court said, oh, and now you can't, you can't do that anymore, they ran. So we didn't get paid. Okay? And I never let that happen, because when you don't pay your rent, you get a notice and then I go and evict you. But I could not evict them, and then they ran. So we do this stuff, and we don't know how it affects people. And I want to tell you, the people who work, who never get tax paid and never get anything, they always feel so left out, because we're coming along, talking about, oh, we're going to give this to this, and you have a right to that. Homeless have a right to this. Dogs have a right to this. But the people who work and pay the taxes don't get anything and don't have a right to anything. And I'm not opposed to people having things. I'm opposed to secretive governments. A secretive government is a government that will not, the executive branch and the president of Board of Aldermen are trying to keep us from knowing where the money went. Because then maybe we may not make the same decision. As long as I don't know what happened with the previous money, I would never support the rest of it. And as much as anything else, we are the legislative body. We are check and balance. If we don't do our jobs, then shame on us. So I rise in opposition to this board bill for the many things that the Alderwoman from the 19th said, and for the fact that we have been totally disrespected, and the Treasurer is not going to give you that information either. And how do you do your job if you can't get information?
Alderwoman from the 17th? Yes, you're recognized.
Can you hear me? Yes, now. Hello. Okay. I just want to speak on this board bill, 116, and the guaranteed income. I do support this, and I just sent an email to everyone regarding research, national research, about this particular program. There are 20-plus cities that have been evaluated in terms of guaranteed income. They were pilot programs. NextSTL is a really good source in terms of looking for national programs that are trying to mitigate poverty in the United States. And this email that I just sent to everyone, again, is focusing on the guaranteed income. And, say again?
You said NextSTL, Next City.
Oh, Next City, I'm sorry. I said NextSTL. Thank you. NextSTL, I mean, Next City, again, is a national organization that looks on how to mitigate poverty in the United States. And they just came out with this report like three days ago that I just sent you. When this was, this bill was spoken about, I had some questions about this guaranteed income. But when I saw this report and that 20-plus cities are being evaluated and they're doing really well in terms of the outcomes, I do support this board bill, 116. Thank you.
Alderman from the 16th?
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board. I'm waiting for the proper amendment to get printed and distributed. In the meantime, I'll discuss what I think conceptually and maybe academically from a public policy standpoint, isn't a bad idea. I think the Alderwoman from the first spoke eloquently to that, to that very effect. But I simply think that more information is needed based on the prior, which again was a hotly debated, the prior $5 million cash, this $5 million cash assistance that was administered. This is a great example of compromise. I'm willing, and I think other members are willing, to revisit this particular issue. And we're going to hold up an untested pilot program to move another $47 million. That doesn't make sense to me, and I don't think that's proper, proper responsiveness from legislators. So I think it's important for us to move forward on a $47 million package, which I have a good sense we all agree on, and we can certainly revisit this. This isn't about press releases and headlines, because there's one sexy pilot provision buried in what is going to be a lot of good help here in this board bill. Madam President, would the Alderwoman from the 26th yield for questions?
The Alderwoman from the 26th yield for questions from the Alderman from the 16th?
Yes.
Alderman, you may proceed.
Thank you, Alderwoman. I'm just going to ask one more time if it's, if it's okay, in the spirit of compromise, that you'd be willing to accept this friendly amendment?
You know, I love to compromise. You know, I have a big spirit and a big heart for compromise. But for this one, because of the heart and because I believe in this, and I believe in the board bill 116 committee sub in its entirety, the answer is going to remain no.
Okay.
And I would like to speak to some of the various things that have been said today, but I'll wait, because I see we have more people standing up to talk, and I don't want to talk over them.
I have nothing further. I'll yield to the Alderwoman from the 19th, Madam President.
Alderwoman from the 19th?
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board. You know, I heard one number, 20 cities, I heard 30 cities that are currently piloting this program. And that's nice, but I want to give you some reference to that number. There are 108,000 cities and towns of the 50 states of the United States, including DC, Puerto Rico, and the US Virgin Islands. I want to compare 20 or 30 pilot programs to 108,000 cities and towns and municipalities that have governance that they look at and provide for their community. Let's take some time. Let's figure it out, and let's do something a little bit better. Thank you.
Alderwoman from the 8th?
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board. I rise in support of this board bill with the inclusion of the Basic Income Pilot. This is, this is a passion area of mine. I, I think that, you know, we, we in the United States are looking at poverty rates increasing over time. We are looking at inflation that has driven people to a greater need than they had before. We are at the end of pandemic aid programs that were funded. And this, this is not just $500. This is $9,000 over the course of 18 months. And these, these projects, these projects have come about as pilots so that communities can start to, to build an understanding of what this type of thing does for people. Because there aren't any other programs that just give cash to families and let them decide what it is that they need to do with it. What is their most urgent need? What is their, what is their, their policy, you know, with their family? What is their value? Trusting people in poverty to use money that they have in the ways that are best suited for them have shown incredible success. There is, there is a document that was released by the mayor's office back in September that is available on the city website that shows a map of where the $500 cash checks were sent out to. So there's a heat map that I'm looking at right now, direct cash assistance by zip code. And it does have a ward overlay on that zip code data. So I, you know, I can't speak to why that data has not come back, but this, this is what was made public back in September. And I, I guess I don't see any reason to distrust that the, the data that was put out was, was anything short of the truth. Because we have, we had families stand with us who received that money. We had organizations who worked on, on getting surveys back from, from the families who received money, and they had conversations about what it was used for. So I, I agree that we are, we are at a time where it is wonderful that our utilities are showing support for families as prices increase, as Spire just increased rates again. Whether or not their programs are going to cover the, the amount of need for families over the course of this winter is unknown at this point. Whether, you know, I, I hadn't heard about a free car program. That sounds great. I would love to know more about that, so we can get that information out to the public. You know, as we are, I am, I am about trusting people to use money the way that they need to use that money. And as we have seen, the income gap, the wealth gap in the United States changed so dramatically, even over the course of our lifetimes, we as people closest to the problems have an ability to use tools that are, that are the closest solutions. If we can get cash into some of these families' hands, particularly the families that have schoolchildren, our, our St. Louis Public Schoolchildren, what is it, a 20% homelessness rate in the city of St. Louis Public Schools? That's astronomical. We have families who are struggling and asking them to have to get to a food pantry, asking them to have to do the hard work to go and apply for all of these programs. We, if we have the ability to offer cash, then can we not trust them to use it where they need it the most? And what the pilot, what the pilot programs have shown is that even for a short amount of time, these, these are only pilots because we haven't gotten the political will nationwide to support families from the ground up across the board. Guaranteed basic income is supposed to be for everyone. It is not supposed to be just a means tested benefit. This is a start. If we can show that this makes a difference in people's lives and changes the way that our government needs to function, to outreach to families, that our utilities need to outreach, then that's great. That's what these pilots are intended to show. And maybe St. Louis is the last pilot, because we have so many, we have so much data coming back. Different cities are doing different things. So offering money to folks who are transitioning out of foster care. So there are cities that are targeting just that. There are cities that are targeting families who are coming out of incarceration. So they're even so bold as to say, someone who has been previously incarcerated gets this cash assistance, even if they go back to jail. Could we be so bold as to support people in that kind of radical way? Maybe. Right now, what's in front of us is children with a marker of poverty in front of the family. And what we know from the expanded child tax credit that I mentioned briefly earlier, last, in 2021, through the pandemic, the administration expanded the child tax credit to remove the barriers even for the lowest income. Because if you don't make a certain amount of money, you don't get the credit. Right? So we have families who are making living wages and above that are getting child tax credits, and that's great for them. That money is important. But if you fall below that line, you don't get the money. And so the children who are in the most poverty are continuing to stay in the most poverty. This is one of our ways to, to push back and say that this is what we're trying to address here. We're, we're moving towards what we know changed families' lives, even for that short amount of time. Families budget the same way that governments should budget. If you have a shorter, if you have a limited amount of money, you do a limited amount of budget. If you have an unending amount of money, you do an unending budget. Right? People do the same thing. If they know they're only getting $9,000, they look at that over the course of 18 months. Maybe they save up for a month or two and they put a down payment on a new apartment. But they're not going to get an apartment that is going to continue to cost more, because they know that that money is ending. So when we communicate those clear goals, people rise to the support that we give them. So I, I am incredibly passionate about this. I have spoken with colleagues around the country who are doing these types of programs. And I, I don't want to miss this opportunity with this money to address a need that the pandemic continued to expose, that we can reach families. And this is not the end. This is the start of something here in St. Louis. We are one of the most philanthropic cities in the country. In other cities, these become public-private partnerships. And with our support, signaling at the Board of Aldermen that we support this, going out and getting private investment to match us, to say, we're, we're going to support our community through matching funds, maybe we can convince the states eventually to come on board with something like this, because our, our neighbors in rural areas need these types of supports as well and deserve to be able to do what they need to do for their families with their money. So I, that's my enthusiastic support. I commend the Alderwoman for bringing this forward and for holding steady on this piece. Thank you.
Alderman from the 23rd?
Just a quick question, maybe, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
Sorry. That's not mine. Let me get around here.
A quick question, and anybody could answer if they could. One, is this going to be taxable, and is it going to move people at $9,000 into an income that will cut them from other resources? I mean, it's certainly something that...
Do you like to ask that of the alderwoman from the 26th?
I ask it for anybody who knows the answer.
Alderwoman from the 26th, will you yield?
Absolutely. Since we don't, it's case by case. So since we wouldn't know where a person was, but that's tracked during the application, then we wouldn't be able to answer that question specifically right now. But what I will say is, you spoke into something that references some of the divisive comments that have been made today. There are plenty of programs out there, but there is working families that don't, on paper, qualify for those programs, but that will qualify for something like this, like they did for the Child Care Tax Credit, like myself. So being referencing the "or" thing, like you can go get food here, you can go get your bills paid here and not get this...
But that's not what I was asking. I'm just wondering if this is taxable.
I answered that question first. I said, "I don't know specifically," because it would be by... Oh, it's not. We won't know any kind of threshold because it's case by case. So I can't say, like for myself, I can't say that it would take me over.
But it is taxable, then?
It's income.
So, okay, so it's a taxable thing. That's what I was curious.
Just like the Child Care Tax Credit that I looked at, thank God I had during the pandemic. Thank God I had during the pandemic. You know, as a working mother, something like this made $250 made a difference in my budget in a month. So I can only imagine for the people that we have heard from countless people what this difference would make for them. And they understand our taxes. They understand our budgeting. They understand how this will work, and nobody's out here trying to be nefarious and break a system or cheat a system. Nobody in this room or anywhere has the position to judge how somebody would spend not just that $500, but judge how they pick up their food, judge how they go get their utilities paid, judge how they get their rental assistance. None of that should be in your reasoning, in your factoring of how you would choose to support a program like this for the people.
I was just curious if it was taxable or not.
Yeah, okay, we answered that.
That was really it.
Let me answer that. And I just want to, again, reference that this bill is not the mayor's bill. This bill is not the treasurer's bill.
Alderwoman, you don't have the floor quite yet. We're getting to you. We're going...
I'm so passionate.
I know. You'll get to close on it. You'll get to close and respond on everything once we get through all the comments. So we'll go back to the alderman from the... Do you want to go to the alderman from the 3rd first? Okay, alderman from the 3rd.
Thank you. I just want to make sure, is the amendment that we just got back, this one with the long paragraph on it?
Correct.
All right. So I guess the first question is...
Why don't we, if you're going to ask a question on the amendment, why don't we put the amendment before us first, then?
Um...
Because it's not before us.
It's not before us. Okay, well, I won't necessarily speak on the amendment then by itself. Actually, we can do that, I guess, because we still have to vote on it.
All right. I'll recognize the alderman from the 16th, then.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board. It looks like we're doing it as two amendments that I would like to take a vote on, so I suppose if Amendment Number 1 fails, we'll know that 2 maybe won't be brought. But I move to adopt Amendment Number 1 to Board Bill 116 Committee Substitute. Need a second. Need a second.
Right, it's been moved by the alderman from the 16th, seconded by the alderman from the 23rd to introduce Amendment Number 1 to Board Bill 116 Committee Substitute. Alderman, you may proceed.
Thank you, Madam President. The amendment's before us here. This is simply just to amend Page 16 light item, which removes all reference to the $5 million from the treasurer's office. I'll yield for questions.
Further discussion?
Yes.
Further discussion. Alderwoman from the 26th.
I have no discussion about this removing, other than, of course, clearly, I'm against it, so I don't want to belabor that on and on.
Right. Alderman from the 3rd.
Yes, yes, ma'am, Madam President. Do have, I guess, a question for the sponsor of the amendment.
Would the alderman from the 16th yield to questions from the alderman from the 3rd?
I will.
Alderman, you may proceed.
Thank you. I guess this is one thing that I see I'm not really catching. We start off with, this is hereby appropriated for the sum of $5 million to the coronavirus, yeah, we're appropriating $5 million. Let me get down to the bottom of it. The same as the treasurer's office will oversee the equitable and efficient disbursement of $4 million of ARPA funds to St. Louis City residents. Where did that million go? We went from five to four, like that. You know, where'd a million dollars? Does it take a million dollars to... You know what? Let me stop. Do you know where the million dollars went to?
I believe that's expenses.
It takes a million dollars to expense a $5 million?
This was the section, copy and paste from the Board Bill Committee Substitute, Alderman, so I'm assuming that $1 million is going to administrative expenses.
So do we... A million dollars just disappears?
Got me.
No.
Why are we standing here?
Alderman from the 3rd, would you like to...
I'm not tripping. Yes, ma'am.
Do you want to inquire the bill sponsor? Since this is original text.
Well, so I want to inquire, well, I guess he said this came from the original bill. So I guess my question would be also, Alderman Odenberg, did you see that there was a million missing here at the time where we did the amendment? Are you kind of looking to go over this?
No, Alderman, I took what would just eliminate the $5 million and its appropriation to the treasurer's office, and then also eliminate the administration of it in the exhibit.
Okay, so a question for you. I guess with this, wow. There's a million dollars missing. I guess with that, I'll yield...
I'm going to inquire of the sponsor. She may know where that million went.
I'll inquire for the sponsor, please.
Alderwoman from the 26th, would you yield to questions from the alderman from the 3rd?
Sure.
Thank you. First of all, I will say there's a lot to talk about with the guaranteed basic income. This is something that I don't disagree with, but there's a lot that I would like to say. But first, I just want to address the, I just want to figure out what happened to a million dollars. Do you know possibly where that million dollars went to within...
What's confusing, I think, is that it's broken down here. It's still the $5 million, and there's nothing in this text or this board bill text that says what the implementation process was going to look like, either in the Department of Human Services or in the treasurer's office.
Would you agree that there's no administrative program right now that you possibly know of that costs a million dollars to run?
I wouldn't agree with that, because I don't know about every administrative program. No, I don't. And since I don't know the details of how they're going to do their implementation process, then again, here again, I'm not going to sit here and judge how they're going to run this program that I believe in.
If you knew that there could be an extra $500 appropriated to the general basic income and removing another $500,000 that they have taken for administrative cost, if that's what has happened thus far, would you be ready to go back and get that $500,000 if you knew that it was something that didn't have to be taken out of this board bill for administrative costs? There's administration that already exists.
There's not administration that already exists for this program. It's a pilot program. It's starting from the scratch.
Right, right. So I mean, with that, they already have people that work for the treasurer's office, though.
If I had to guess, there's no way that there's some people already in the office of the treasurer. As much as we are out here saying that we want to hire people for everything else, I can't believe that there's already people there sitting there waiting to see if we're going to pass this today.
No, I agree with that. My thoughts would be those people who administered the program prior, when we had the one-time disbursement, who worked very diligently on that to try to figure it out. All of these are programs that we've never had the ability to push out to our community. So, yeah, this is all uncharted waters for us, and even what other states are doing it is. So I'm not saying that, you know, we may not have them, or we do. I was just simply saying, you know, those folks that were there could potentially still be there to help along the process, so that would be something that we can look into. I just think a million dollars, number one, is, you know, that's like a fifth of what we're supposed to be helping these people with. That looks a little... It looks to be a lot. So that was my first thought. I just wanted to ask specifically about that. My second thought is, I think that this is an extremely important piece of legislation. It alludes to the point of we're saying that our citizens and the people in St. Louis are impoverished. We have a lot of people that are impoverished, way more than... And I got to say it like this, because it's the truth, way more than this 440 households. So just like with the $500 that was dispersed, the only reason I disagree with that, I think I was the only alderman that voted no, is because I just wanted it to be put out in a way where it seemed equitable, and just like Alderwoman Ty said, you know, we were able to look at it and say, "Hey, it went to this person and not that person." Like, this is the truth. I don't feel like somebody that's out here on crack, or somebody who is in the same income bracket because they get Social Security or whatever it is that they have, not Social Security, but because they get some type of an income, but they are utilizing their funding or, you know, the money for things that could potentially... I mean, it's just the truth, man. Like, we got a lot of stuff going on in our communities. So the only reason I was, once again, voting against the $500 the last time, which I did vote against, is because I believe there needed to be a way where we can outline who got these dollars and how it is that they were put back into the community to stimulate our economy. This is $5 million. So this is, you know, something that I've already expressed some time ago. I'd just like to see some more organization around it. I think that this is something, once again, that's important, and I don't think that it's something that I would not support in its proper form. The thought would be, with all of the thousands of residents that are out there saying, "I'm impoverished. I need help. How can I get on that list?" And we end up like, right, you know, we had 10,000 people sign up for $500, and over 10,000 of them were qualified. If we have 10,000 people sign up for these dollars, and we only choose 440, you know, what is our guideline from looking at, you know, who are we choosing? Is it first come, first served? If somebody's application is incomplete, do they get kicked out, put down a line, wait, you know, to be called back? You know, these things, because it's such a small amount of people, I think the residents in the city of St. Louis will feel not only left out, they will feel, when they're not chosen, unchosen. And not, you know, we don't have another program that's coming up that can say, you know, but then there's going to be another tranche of people's turns. This is just like a one-stop shop right now. So, you know, with that being said, I just feel that if we voted for this, or if I voted for it, and I wouldn't be able to justify to my residents when I'm saying, "Hey, Ms. Johnson got it, but Ms. Whitaker didn't, and she lives on the exact same block." And I'm not able to say, because they don't give out the universal basic income on the same block, the two people right across the street each other within a certain area, right? So the thought is, I want to be able to articulate things to my residents on why these 440 people were chosen, chosen versus the thousands that won't be chosen at some point in time. Once again, I think this is a good way to take care of some of our folks, but I think that, you know, like, we got mothers out here right now that's busting their bus at their job and don't have a little bit of money to get, not a little bit, but the money that they need to get the title and get their car title, get their car registered. These are dollars that could potentially help. But what does it look like saying, "Hey, we're going to take care of, you know, 100 single mothers, and, you know, we're going to make sure that we get their cars registered so they don't have to ride around with bad plates no more and be subject to getting pulled over by the police on their way to work and losing their job." That's something that all of the people in the city could be like, "We tired of these non-registered plates. We tired of people driving around with the tags and this and this. You give the police a little bit less to worry about, and we get hundreds of cars possibly registered within the city, and it re-stimulates the city's economy because we putting money back into the city. We put money back on the tax roll." We'll see some of those dollars again. That $500 doesn't go to Walmart. It doesn't go to the private companies like Snooks or this and that. These dollars go to a place where we know that they're impacting that person's lives, and every dollar, I got to be true with it, is not impacting everybody's lives. We got a whole lot of us, and we always talk about poor people need to have financial education. Where are we supposed to get it from? So, yeah, we do need financial education. We do need things that we were not privy to growing up in school, and folks do need financial literacy. That's one of the reasons the treasurer's office and, you know, the mayor, one point in time, had those programs, because they noticed the need. Our schools, we all live in these neighborhoods. We know what our children need. You know, so with those things being said, leading in a direction of where they can, you know, see that these dollars are helping them every single month. You know, those mothers out there who kids are going to school with holes in their shoes. You can't always go to TJ Maxx and ask for this or that. You're not going to always be able to go to the Urban League or all these other places because they helping multiple people at the same time. You know, every child has a different idea of what their needs are as well. These parents wake up in the morning time, and their kids are getting bullied. They have different things that are going on, different needs that can help them out. You know, just having some extra gas to get to your auntie's house. All of these things create, you know, the need for us to have a general basic income, but it being structured in a way where we know that these dollars are being utilized to where the taxpayers can say, overall, it's helping everybody. These 400 families have been helped, and the whole entire city is better off for it, not just them as a whole. Once again, like, we getting rid of the tag thing. We got 200 cars registered, 300 mamas got jobs, or whatever it is that we are doing to be able to say, these families, out of the thousands of ones within a particular criteria, this is the reasons why we believe they can help steer the city in a direction that changes not only their situation, but how it affects other people around them as well. Like, this is all a rippling effect, and we're village. So with that being said, I will say, once again, I support the general basic income in a form in which we'll be able to justify who gets it, why they got it, and not only what, you know, what'll be done with it, but, you know, we just want to be able to steer things in a way to where we are being responsible, with giving responsible people who have needs the choices to be able to take care of their families the way that, you know, they see fit, which is a little bit troubling for some of all of us at some point in time, especially with COVID and other things that get thrown at us. So, you know, once again, that's going to be hundreds of people talking online and other, you know, other places when they find out one person got that 440. I mean, and one person, you know, got approved, and it's, you know, when you waiting for six months and seven months just to hear back from the city of St. Louis, because we all are aldermen, we don't run the treasurer's office, when you waiting to hear that information back, it's going to frustrate people, and people will get very frustrated after they say that it's closed and there's no more money to be given out. So I just like us to be able to say, and especially me, I want to say, Ms. Jones or whoever it is, "This is why you didn't get the money. This is why she got it across the street." Because my residents talk, they're going to be, "Girl, I got that money today. I'm going to go to the grocery..." They say it. So, you know, I want to be able to, when they call me and be mad, "You ain't done nothing for me," and that's what it's going to sound like. You ain't never done nothing. I want to be able to say, "I tried, and this is what I tried to do." And right now, in this particular form, just like back then, when we were doing the $500, I kind of said and alluded to the same thing, I felt like there should be a little bit more structure just on how it is that we choose these folks, so therefore, that can be a general idea of not only what the requirements are, because we just saying it's income-based, right? It got to be just a little bit more than that, because, you know, everybody that's impoverished and responsible, we have some very, very responsible people who are impoverished who just not have had the chance in their lives to be able to upgrade themselves to another platform. So with that being said, I'll yield. I appreciate the efforts of you, alderwoman from the 27th. Oh, you're the 27th, right. I'm tripping. But 26, I'm sorry. But I do appreciate you. I think that what you're doing 100% comes from the heart, right? It is not coming from anywhere other than that. And, you know, I applaud you for trying and working hard on this as well. I wish that I would have done a little bit better job of having conversation with you doing committee. You just had this come out, and I could have said something at the end, and I should have been paying attention to that. So I will apologize for bringing this up at this moment. You know, but I do believe that we all could possibly be interested in, you know, voting for this, even those who are against it, if there was some justification on it making complete sense of how it'll kind of cause that rippling effect from these 400 families. So with that being said, once again, I appreciate you. I think this is, you know, a great way to show our residents that we care about them, and we are looking at those people who need help every day. We just want to look at the best way to try to figure out how to get them their help and make sure that when you said no to, or you don't get chosen, you know why, so you and make sure that when you said no to, or you don't get chosen, you know why, so you can come back. And, you know, and it's not just a first come, first served next time. We just gotta start figuring that out when we can't help everybody. So, with that being said, I yield, thank you.
Alderwoman from the 8th.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board. So, I was able to get a little bit of clarity on that $1 million that is supposed to be used for benefits counselors, to the alderman from the 23rd's question about whether or not this would unintentionally kick folks off of other benefits. So, this would walk through with families as they are applying for this, to make sure that this amount of income doesn't take them off of any other programs that they are currently receiving, and that it would also be used for program administration. So, the reason that that was removed in this particular section was because they don't imagine that it's going to cost a full million dollars. But, so I have our legal counsel working on an amendment that would just add to the end of this section that $1 million shall be used for benefits counselors and program administration. Any funds not used for the above purposes shall be added to the GBI fund for further disbursement. So, that would solve that missing million dollars. And I would be, you know, I know that we're on a different amendment at the moment, so I'm not gonna offer that at the moment, we're working on writing it up. But that program, the program counselors, the benefits counselors are really important when we're talking about these things, to make sure we don't have any unintended consequences here. But I do have a question for the alderman. I have a question for the alderman from the 16th, if he would yield for a question.
I will yield.
Alderman from the 16th, will you yield questions from the alderwoman from the 8th?
Indeed, I do.
Alderman, you may proceed.
Thank you so much. Alderman from the 16th, could you tell me what it is that you are looking for out of a program such as this? Is there a particular subset of criteria? Is there a particular dollar amount? What is it that you would be looking for, for a program like this to be successful?
Yeah. Well, first of all, thank you for the question, alderwoman. I think my philosophy resonates with the majority of the members of this board, is I don't have a problem with an anti-poverty agenda. I don't have a problem in concept, or even from an academic theoretical standpoint, administering funds in this construct. I think the fastest way to grow wealth, in the areas it needs to, is to improve people's assets. So, whether or not it can be a down payment for a consumer loan, whether or not it can be specified for a down payment of a house, right? Because we know property and property values rising and increasing are the fastest way to grow wealth. We don't know what this does. This is a check to people. It's dubious, to the extent that the outcome can be gathered, quite honestly. I think if it was more targeted, I think you would have better response to it, and no amendments trying to be put on it.
Could I ask what you mean by targeted? What would a targeted program look like?
Down payment assistance for a first-time homebuyer, down payment assistance for a consumer car loan, or another, other consumer loans. Something that can provide an asset that provides a personal, to someone's personal balance sheet, which would grow wealth.
So, what would administering further programs like that cost us? So, I guess what I'm looking at is the potential for cash to be given for the needs, as the family sees fit, with the administration of just getting that money to them, and tracking it, and seeing what it is that they spend that money on, is very different from walking a family through a home purchase, a home, their house purchase. It's different than walking them through a car loan process. It's, direct cash, in this instance, is much less top-heavy as an administered program, with some of the same effects as building wealth, because the families can choose to use that. And so, you're not, you know, you're not X-ing out someone who may have inherited a home from, you know, from a relative that needs fixing up, so they need the cash to go fix up that home. Or, you know, if they've got a car, but they just need to get the repairs done on it, or they need to get it registered with the city, please get your cars registered for the city of St. Louis, and get some insurance. Thank you. But what is, like, what is it that, is there a potential for implementing another program that makes that overhead even higher, and makes less money available to the families that need it?
So, I think you're asking me the question that a cash giveaway is just administratively easier, so that's what works in terms of growing wealth. I categorically disagree with that. Just because it's easier to give cash, as opposed to do and implement the tools that we know grow wealth? Home purchase, right? Increasing property values? Those are wonderful proven tools in terms of anti-poverty. Because we know when property values increase, in disinvested communities, appraisal values start to go up, right? And once appraisal values start to go up, wealth starts to grow in the exchange of real estate. I mean, I think that's the first step, because we know, we all know, Real Estate 101 here. So, let's increase people's home purchases, the value of their homes and their property. That would, you asked me what I would think. That's a specific tool that I think could work.
Okay. I mean, I agree that that is one of the tools that work, but I don't think that home purchasing is a viable, is a viable alternative for all of these families that we're dealing with. Finding property that is suitable, you know what I mean?
I'm willing to compromise. I think it's a tool that could be used, I guess that...
So, when you said that you want to strip this out of this bill right now, to bring it back as something more workable as a GBI, you don't actually mean that you would bring this back as a GBI bill? You want this money to go to a different type of program?
Well, I think there's room for both, in the $5 million, plus with additional ARPA dollars. I think it should be part of the conversation in bringing it back.
But if we pull any more money out of this $5 million, then that is less than 440 families that are going to be affected. And that is already a pretty small number, when we know the families that are in poverty in our city.
Yes, that's a true statement, what you said, that it would affect less, there's that, you know? You have to balance the equation, correct?
So, I would, I mean, I would say, we're looking at the rest of these ARPA dollars. There's, you know, there's another bill coming in front of us that deals with more infrastructure funds, things like that. I would rather that we take money out of some of those other pots that may not be necessary, and we give folks cash, because what we're seeing is that it works. It does work. In the communities that are trying this, it has a vast improvement on people's lives. And we know that raising people out of poverty, giving them, giving someone who's earning an hourly wage the day, the amount of money in their bank account, to be able to take a day off work and go get a better job, to take a day off work and get their car taken care of, to take a day off work, go to the doctor and get themselves taken care of, right? Then they can work a different type of job, and maybe come off of a different benefit program. This is, this meets people where they are. And I don't disagree that, you know, down payment assistance is great. I think we have some of that built out for city employees in one of these bills as well, and I think that's great. I just don't want, I don't want to be taking, robbing from Peter to pay Paul here, when we have a massive amount of money still left, and there are potential programs that aren't just directly affecting the lives of our citizens in a way that pulls them out of poverty, that reduces crime, that reduces hunger, that gives kids the ability to thrive in school, when we have the opportunity to spend this money in this radical way. Thank you, Alderman. I think that's, I'm opposed to this, because I think, I think we have this opportunity to do this. I think we should expand this program. I think this should not be the end of this. And I, so I'm in opposition to this amendment to strike these funds. Thank you.
Alderwoman from the 1st.
This is the only mic that I've ever had that was taller than me, so I really appreciate the alderman from the 16th. No, I like it, because I'm usually pulling it up. And I would like to respond to some of the things the alderman from the 8th said about why we wouldn't trust the numbers. I want to tell you about the first $500 that we had. Maybe you didn't have it in you. Excuse me. Thank you. Maybe you didn't have it in your communities, and I've been bringing this up since the previous administration. The first thing this administration did is start to talk about putting the $500 out on the computer. And that's what the previous administration did. And I actually had to, and it wasn't for 500, but it was for something else. And my secretary and I had to then print up stuff, because I have a lot of seniors that do not have computer access, or just people who don't. So, when you put everything on the computer, the people who are on computer get first access to that. And I think if you look it up, you'll see I brought that up when COVID first came out, when we were under the Cruz administration. So, what this administration did is immediately just follow in behind what the Cruz administration did with the $500. Well, they weren't getting many people in North St. Louis, they weren't getting many seniors, they were not getting people, and the people were complaining. And so, then, they said, okay, we're going to do some in-person things, so we're gonna go to Forest Park. And so, they went to Forest Park, and then they didn't get a lot of people from North St. Louis, and so the people complained. And then the people in this administration said, because the people said, we can't get there, and they said, well, you could just get on the MetroLink, and you can ride over to the MetroLink to Forest Park. So, the people in North St. Louis says, idiot, we do not have MetroLink in North St. Louis, because you promised it to us 30 years ago, and you haven't kept your promise. Because that's why they're so unaware, because they don't live in my community. Nobody in the mayor's office lives in my community, including the mayor. So, they don't understand what's going on. So, then, they got in trouble, and they still weren't getting things, so they were calling me. I was telling them ways, which they do not listen, because they could've just gone to senior buildings and got a lot of people that qualified. They didn't, they just want to do what they want to do, so they came over to Wal's Center. And the people were so thankful that they came to Wal's Center, and they said, we're gonna be open this day, this day, this day. And so, then, they closed like the first day afterwards, after they had told people a whole different thing, then they were closed, like, we have enough now. Could've done that a long time ago. But then, to tell people you're gonna be open for two or three days, and then you're not, that's why I don't trust it, okay? I don't trust the way the whole program was done. That's why I'm asking for information. And when you ask me for information, I do not try to keep information from you. The minute you try to keep information from me, that's why I don't trust it. Because you all are the generation of transparency, transparency. So, give me the transparency. So, you just sit here and say, that's all right, alderwoman, you've been here 30 years, but you don't have a right to know where the money went specifically? And then the mayor puts out this thing, the direct opposite of what I asked for. You gonna put an overlay and say, this is what is, this is the ward? Then if you have that, then you should be able to have the exact number of each ward where the money went. But already, I don't ask questions that I don't know the answer to. And the reason you don't want to give me the answer, but I'm gonna get anyway, because it's not going to jail with what you're putting out there, false information. That's the reason why I don't trust it, because those people who don't have anything to hide, guess what? They don't hide anything. And there's, I have never, in 30 years of my political life, had, nobody in my community can tell you, I got that. We ask at any meeting, anything, they're like, I don't know anybody that got it. That doesn't make sense. That's why you don't trust it, because it doesn't make sense. And if you had it, so you could show how it was dispersed, you would put it out. I didn't at first ask for names and address, I want it all now. Because I want the names and address, because if Adam Lane gets to have it, and he wasn't elected, surely, I should be able to look at it, okay? So, you do not tell me what has happened in my community. And the reason why I came and asked is because the people in my community keep saying, who got the money? And as the alderman from the 3rd said, then he has to try to explain why somebody got it and somebody didn't. You can't explain, because everybody's, oh, this is successful, but you don't want to provide the data. I want data, that's what I want. I don't want any of yours is successful, because that's not good data. I ask for that, anybody who's on my committee, I ask for data, give it to us, that's me, okay? Now, so, if you cannot provide me data, I don't trust you. Now, when you tell me you're gonna give it to me, and I'm gonna, I sent you all, oh, I started asking for this in May. I still don't have this data in November. And the truth is, they hadn't spent all the money. I know, I've been around here so long, that there's not hardly anything mayors can hide from me. So, but tell the truth, and say, this didn't work out right. We didn't do this right, we need to, so don't come back here and want to do the same thing, and then we see you have a million dollars floating around there. Now, I don't trust it even more. The more you do, when you're not specific, the more I don't trust it. Now, let me just tell you, if I do that, don't trust me either, okay? Because I am supposed to be able to give you specifics. When you don't have specifics, then it's hard to trust what's going on. So, I'm standing here supporting this amendment, because, first of all, I also want to disagree with the alderwoman from the 8th, when she says, well, they have a right to decide what they want to do with their money. And they have a right to do that. This is taxpayers' money, in case we haven't. This is taxpayers' money. And I really do understand not having money. My husband and I, when we got married, we were so in debt with student loans and things like that, that we got $10 a week, I can still show you my budget. And he would whine and say, Sharon, do you have any money left? And I'd say, yep, but you spent yours, okay? So, this is not my money. And we did that, and we went to $20, and $30, and $50, and we had to really not do a lot of things. Had old cars, paid them student loans off. And I'm not wishing that on anybody else, but don't act like you went out and earned this money. Now, I'm also not acting like there hadn't been racism that prevented people from earning money, and from having, the alderman talks about from the 16th, about homeownership. My house, if it was anyplace else, would be worth about $500,000, okay? But because of racism, then my house went way down under truth. Now, we're going back up, because we're the next new discovered neighborhood. But that's one way to make, earn income. And black people buy houses, what happens? White people buy houses, and they pay $50,000, and then they sell it for $150,000. Then black people buy it for $150,000, then they can sell it for $25,000. They lose all the equity. So, that is because, when the mayor first got in office, I talked to she and her dad about guaranteeing that if a house had XYZ, that that would be, no matter where the house was, it could sell for that amount. So, there are other ways. But to just try to argue, because somebody is below a certain income, because there's always gonna be somebody else that's missed when you do this. I do not believe in giving out cash. Now, I'ma roll up your sleeves and get a job. So, let me tell you a little story. When I graduated from Washington University, I had a law degree from Washington University, but because I had been sick and had another surgery back then, I could not take the bar, I had to wait till the next time. So, you know what I did to earn money? I went, my grandparents, my husband's grandparents had little old ladies who needed things, I took them to the store. I took them, I cleaned refrigerators. And people said, well, you don't have to do that, including my husband. Yes, I do, because I earn my own money, okay? So, there's always work out there. And I'm not talking about the people who can't work, I'm not talking about the seniors. But at a time when we are begging people for work, before we get out here saying, let me just give you this guaranteed income, what I'm saying to you, let me give you a job. Because that's where I was raised. The man who gets, given a fish, doesn't have it. But the man who learns how to fish, you have it. So, I think that there are a lot of, quote, progressives, it used to be the liberals, pushed this agenda about give people stuff, and see what we doing for you. When we let them earn it, and they make a living themselves, it's a very different proudness. When you let them, when a man has a job, and you provide jobs and opportunity, that's a proudness. Just saying, I'm gonna give you $500, and then when you see in this bill that it was this administrative cost, that once the alderman from the 16th and the 3rd start bringing it up, oh, we can fix that. That should've been fixed in the first place. And I guarantee you, there are probably other things that are wrong with this bill that is costing too much money. We are always gonna be approached by, now, people are gonna watch this. People in the back went and talked to me, when I went in the hallway, well, what, you mean they had a million dollars? Oh, well, now we fix that. But at first, they were saying, well, we don't know where that money is, and how much it's gonna cost to administer. And the alderman from the 3rd said, well, we already have people in place. So, why would you have this extra money floating out? Have the extra money flow now, because there is no transparency, and there is no accountability, okay? And that is what the problem is, no transparency, no accountability. If you want me to support something, there has to be my ability to go back to the people who live in the first ward, the original 20th ward, and say, well, Ms. Jones, none of us qualify for that. That's what come, nobody knows about. I just don't believe that. I don't believe anybody in my ward didn't qualify. In every meeting, we're asking, and nobody knows, not only is it not me, it's nobody else. So, just because you put something over a map, and you say, well, this is successful, and this is why, maybe the alderwoman from the 8th believes that the mayor's mouth is the Bible. I don't, okay? There's things that she said, before any of you all came along, I was the one supporting her. Before any of you all progressives, I'm the one took all the hits on the floor and supported her. And she has not been truthful. So, I do not believe what she says. Trust everybody and verify. So, you are welcome to believe that that's successful, but just wouldn't it be wonderful if we had that data? And why is it such a hardship to provide us data, if people keep asking for that? What is the hardship? It's like saying, I don't have to, and I don't care if the charter. Because what the mayor and the president, I mean, and the treasurer doing, is they're violating the charter. Why do we go along with that? I mean, there's been all this stuff in the newspaper about people trying to get information, and they have to do sunshine, and they have to fight. What happened to the generation of transparency? Put everything out there. Now, I'm not saying put people's addresses and phone numbers and stuff, but there ought to be a way where we can find this out pretty quick. And for me to be asking since May, and it's now December, there's a reason for this. So, no, I do not believe that we should just keep doing the same thing over and over, because that's how, there's a, you're a lunatic when you do that, okay? But also, I... But also, I don't believe that people have a right to just decide what money it is. They have other kind of programs. And the reason they don't give people direct money is because when they get direct money, they do other things that's not supposed to be. If you want to have a budget, and what you can do, you need to work for it. But when you have a budget that the taxpayers are providing, then they're trying to give you your, the things that you need. Section eight, people are always against section eight. I never was against section eight. We have section eight and we have market rating. You cannot tell the difference because I don't put up with it. I will not put you out of my house if you are not doing good behavior. But what we also found is people, not, not the behavior, they, they don't, they, they go and they move their boyfriends and people in. That's not what section eight is supposed to be about. It's supposed to be about whoever rented that apartment and their kids. So don't act like that things doesn't have abuse that happen. Because there is abusive relationship and especially with cash with no way to trace it. And then if we, then something happens and the press start asking us, well, what happened to that? The Board of Aldermen should be looking at that. And we said, well, duh, we don't know. We just gave them some more. Because after a while, we, we were with that mayor and we don't want to know. Now the next mayor come along, we may not like them, now we want to know. I've always wanted to know, is not a mayor, can I tell you that I didn't want to know where the money was, how does it work? That's the way we're supposed to do. And again, if that's not what we want to do, if we just want to trust everybody and not verify, then we should not be down here. We should all leave. And just saying, I support this and it's not good legislation, I will refer you to all the things I wrote to you about Proposition D and Proposition R. And we passed that anyway. And what happened? We spent $200,000 to $300,000 on an election in September that nobody should have had to pay for. That was taxpayers' money. I am responsible for going back to the taxpayers. And the people who were down here saying what a great thing that was, I heard, Alderwoman from the eighth, somebody said, we didn't write that. But you went out there and supported it. You didn't say, this is not a good job. So it's not okay to just say, I didn't write it. It's wrong to say, I'm supporting something and you're not even listening to common sense. And I sent this to the entire board saying, this is not right. This is crazy. This is going to have a bad outcome. So we just waste taxpayers' dollars? They should vote us all out of here. I am supporting your amendment and I'm supporting, and if you just doesn't get it, I'm not voting for this because they have no right to put this into some kind of action. And it is not in the form that should be. And we do not have a right to guarantee people cash money and think that's all right. That is wrong. There are all other kind of ways to get, help people. I'm going to hurt you all in a minute. Excuse me. You want to be at this mic? Thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you. If, if, if we are not going to do our jobs and we just going to throw money out, I want to throw it out to the taxpayers. I have yet to see any money in my ward, no matter what it was. Because I have an announcement about that money that we put in Alderman, Odenberg's bill. None of it's been spent hardly. It's about paving our streets. We found that out in streets yesterday. I want to see people who have paid their taxes get something. And I'm not seeing that. I'm not opposed to people who are poor getting things, but I am very opposed to the people who pay taxes and never get anything. And then when you ask for accountability, oh, that's, we don't need to do that. Okay, why do we need to vote at the Board of Aldermen? Stop voting. Just let the mayor run the city. We will soon turn out the lights and leave. Thank you.
Right. The woman from the 19th.
Thank you very much. And I hate to do this, but your amendment needs a little bit more clarity. When we talk about a $5 million allocation, it should be denoted exactly what it is. So we're talking about 440 individuals. That's $3,960,000 that's actually going to the public. And I'd like to see that separated out. Are you going to hear me, Colonna? Thank you, sir. I'd like to definitely denote that because, you know, we got some people out here, they'll start dividing 440 into 5 million. And they'll be like, wait a minute, wait a minute, that don't add up, what you doing? So you need to have clarity for the public so that they know that it's only $3,960,000 that's really going to be allocated to $500 for 440 individuals. That needs to be clarified. Okay? Thank you.
Right. Alderman from the 16th, you are recognized to close in your amendment.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board. I want to be clear, this isn't, this is an amendment to, to be, you know, some, in any way, an impediment or an obstacle to, I think, the, the idea here. I think, you know, I want to also maybe just touch before I close here on some of the questions. The alderwoman from the eighth asked me earlier is, well, where else would you direct this? I think I, I had some, some pointed answers to that. But look at the rest of this list in this exhibit, right? Things that we know are proven and aren't test pilots. Why is only $2 million being allocated to early childhood development? Should be $10 million to early childhood development. Or at least put the additional five there. We know, we know that investing early on in children has outcomes. We're not sure of the outcomes that they're going to be able to track in any data points around a $5 million cash giveaway. We're unsure of it. Let's go with the sure thing. I'd be happy to withdraw this amendment and park the $5 million in early childhood education. So I think we belabor at this point. I'm looking for affirmative, aye votes on this amendment number one to Board Bill 116, Committee Substitute. Let's, let's amend this. Let's get $47 million out the door on, on some proven things in this exhibit that we all agree on. Feels like a good compromise. With that, I renew my motion.
It's been moved by the Alderman from the 16th, seconded by the Alderman from the 23rd, that we adopt amendment one to Board Bill 116, Committee Substitute. Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Alderwoman Tyus. Alderwoman Middlebrook. Alderman Bosley. Alderwoman Evans. Alderman Page. Alderwoman Iglesias. Alderman Carter. Alderwoman Rice. Alderman Gunther. Alderman Ballmer. Alderman Lappi. Alderman Stevens. Alderwoman Howard. Alderman Odenberg. Alderwoman Peel. Alderman Todd. Alderwoman Davis. Alderwoman Spencer. Alderwoman Keys. Alderwoman Walker. Alderman Bacaro. Alderman Orion. Alderman Con. Alderwoman Clark Hubbard. Alderwoman Boyd. Alderman Grass. President Green. Alderwoman Middlebrook. Alderwoman Evans. Alderman Carter. Alderwoman Howard. Alderman Odenberg. Eight aye votes, 15 no votes and one abstain.
By your vote, you failed to sustain the motion to adopt amendment one to Board Bill Number 116, Committee Substitute. Alderwoman from the 26th, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the committee. So are we, we back in front of?
The full.
The full Board Bill 116 Committee Substitute. And I renew.
Any further discussion?
Any, any further discussion about this Board Bill?
Alderman from the 25th? No, you're just standing. Alderwoman from the eighth? You made the original motion. I do recognize that.
Oh, sure. I, we're, we are working on an amendment that is being printed right now. So I don't want, I don't want to just stand here and belabor, but there is, we're dealing with the challenges that we have here at the moment. So I will go ahead, it's, it is being printed. It will be in front of you here shortly. But the amendment, the same as I read earlier, to amend said Board Bill, beginning on page seven, line 12, following the words and figures, 440 households, insert is following, $1 million shall be used for benefits counselors and program administrators. Any funds not used for the foregoing purposes shall be added to the city's GBI fund for further disbursement. So that will be in front of you as soon as we get it off of the printer. And that will account for that remaining $1 million. The intent was always to use it for this purpose, but because it, it's not going, they don't believe that it's going to cost a million dollars, it, it was removed from that amendment. So we're, we're lining that out now and making sure we're clear on what that money is going to be used for. And then if it is, if it's not needed, then it'll roll back into the fund and we'll get some more money to some more folks. So I'm not sure if we just want to hold for a minute.
Do you know where and process those amendments are?
It is, it's on the printer. I think someone just ran to go get it.
Okay. So it should be here momentarily?
Yes. It may have been uploaded, I'm not sure if it has been uploaded to the drive. We'll see. Appreciate everyone working with all of these things. I, I do think this is a, a big vote for us being in person, though not necessarily here because it is much easier to have these types of substantive conversations when we're in person. And I, and I know we've gone for a long time, but it's not the 12-hour marathon that we had before. So I'm pretty, I'm pretty happy about that. Listen, we got donuts, we got donuts. It looks like we do have the amendment? Yes. All right, if we need to just go ahead and pass that out, Madam Clerk, that.
Okay.
Oh, should be number two.
Right. It should be number two.
Okay. We're just changing the number on the amendment to number two because we already had amendment one. And then it will be in front of you here shortly. Hang on.
It's under my tree. I haven't opened it. I do not open things before Christmas. Oh, well, you should have clarified because it's under the tree.
Thank you.
All right. The amendment should be on everybody's desk now. Alderwoman from the eighth. Okay. And it's also in the drive as well.
Wonderful. All right. Well, I, I move we adopt amendment number two to Board Bill 116, Committee Substitute.
Okay. It's been moved by the Alderwoman from the eighth, seconded by the Alderman from the 25th, that we adopt amendment number two to Board Bill Number 116, Committee Substitute.
Aye.
Any, any discussion on the amendment?
No.
All right. Hearing no discussion, Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
We're voting on amendment two to Board Bill 116.
Alderwoman Tyus.
President.
Alderwoman Middlebrook.
Aye.
Alderman Bosley.
Aye.
Aye.
Alderman Page.
Aye.
Alderwoman Iglesias.
Aye.
Alderman Carter. Alderwoman Rice.
Aye.
Alderman Gunther.
Aye.
Alderman Ballmer.
Aye.
Alderman Lappi.
President.
Alderman Stevens.
Aye.
Alderwoman Switzer.
Aye.
Alderwoman Howard. Alderman Odenberg.
Aye.
Alderwoman Peel.
Aye.
Alderman Todd.
Aye.
Alderwoman Davis.
Aye.
Alderwoman Spencer.
Aye.
Alderwoman Keys.
Aye.
Alderwoman Walker.
Aye.
Alderman Bacaro.
President.
Aye.
Alderman Con.
Aye.
Alderwoman Clark Hubbard.
Aye.
Alderwoman Boyd.
President.
Alderman Grass.
Aye.
President Green.
Aye.
Alderwoman Middlebrook.
Aye.
Alderman Carter. Alderman Ballmer.
Aye.
22 aye votes and four voted present.
By your vote, you have adopted amendment number two to Board Bill Number 116, Committee Substitute. Alderwoman from the 26th, you are recognized to close.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the, members of the board. I was, I'm getting caught up a little bit here because of the passion and emotion that goes behind this bill, right? Why we called it the Working Families Bill. And why I ran through the airport today to get here to fight for this bill. You know, I know there's going to be a lot of apprehension in the programs with anything we do here in the city of St. Louis. But we fight together through that apprehension. We work together through that apprehension for the betterment of the greater good of our communities. We as leaders have to follow the data, not our emotions, not our relationships with people in different places, but the data. And the data has shown here in the city of St. Louis already through the one payment of the impact it made on families. So now we as leaders continue to follow the data and see how it can impact the people, right? The people that it will serve and the people that this entire bill will resource. Pulling out GBI is okay, right? But I personally believe in GBI. I've studied GBI. We had committee meetings. We had meetings outside of meetings about GBI. I personally believe in GBI. So I thank you, all of you all that stood in solidarity and didn't vote for the amendment that would have took, stricken that $5 million out of this bill. This bill was and for me, right? You might have saw me talking about that. Here down here, we always say, well, you doing this, why don't we do this? Are you doing this? Why doing this? It's always a or mentality. That's divisive to have a or mentality. We have an and. I want us to start having an and mentality. Do you know how many working families we going to serve with this, with this legislation? This is good work and this is for the people, right? The data stood with the people on this legislation and that's why we as leaders today need to continue to stand with our people as we move forward with this legislation. So with that, I'm asking again for your favorable, for your do-pass recommendation, your favorable consideration, your aye vote. I'm back in committee. I don't want, we'd have so many committees if they... I'm asking for your aye vote for Board Bill 116, now Committee Sub as amended.
Right, it has been moved by the Alderwoman from the 8th, it was seconded by the Alderman from the 25th, that we perfect Board Bill number 116, Committee Substitute. Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Alderwoman Tyus?
No.
Alderwoman Middlebrook? Alderman Bosley?
Aye.
Alderwoman Evans? Alderman Page?
Aye.
Alderwoman Negracia?
Aye.
Alderman Carter? Alderwoman Rice?
Aye.
Alderman Gunther?
Aye.
Alderman Ballmer?
No.
Alderman Lappy? Alderman Stevens?
Aye.
Alderwoman Switzer?
Aye.
Alderwoman Howard? Alderman Oldenburg?
No.
Alderwoman Peel?
Aye.
Alderman Todd?
Aye.
Alderwoman Davis? Alderwoman Spencer?
Aye.
Alderwoman Keys?
Aye.
Alderwoman Walker?
Aye.
Alderman Vacaro?
No.
Alderman Orion?
Aye.
Alderman Con?
Aye.
Alderwoman Clark Hubbard?
Aye.
Alderwoman Boyd?
President.
Alderman Grass?
Aye.
President Green?
Aye.
Alderwoman Evans?
Aye.
Alderman Carter? Alderwoman Howard? Alderwoman Davis?
President.
18 aye votes, five no votes, one abstained, and two voted present.
By your vote, you sustain the motion to perfect Board Bill number 116, Committee Substitute as amended.
Thank you, everyone. That's the extent of Board Bill for perfection.
Third reading report and engrossment. Wait, hold on. Third reading consent calendar.
Board Bill 76, 83, 73, 112 as amended, 104, 108, 113, I'm sorry, and 113.
I'm not on the right page. I am missing a page number here. There we go. Okay. There we are. Alderman from the 25th, you are recognized on the motion for the third reading consent calendar.
Thank you, Madam President. I move that we adopt the third reading consent calendar.
It's been moved by the Alderman from the 25th, seconded by the Alderman from the 9th, that we approve the third reading consent calendar. Uh, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderwoman Tyus?
Aye.
Alderwoman Middlebrook?
Aye.
Alderman Bosley?
Aye.
Alderwoman Evans?
Aye.
Alderman Page?
Aye.
Alderwoman Negracia?
Aye.
Alderman Carter? Alderwoman Rice? Alderman Gunther?
Aye.
Alderman Ballmer?
Aye.
Alderman Lappy?
Aye.
Alderman Stevens?
Aye.
Alderwoman Switzer?
Aye.
Alderwoman Howard? Alderman Oldenburg?
Aye.
Alderwoman Peel?
Aye.
Alderman Todd?
Aye.
Alderwoman Davis?
Aye.
Alderwoman Spencer?
Aye.
Alderwoman Keys?
Aye.
Alderwoman Walker?
Aye.
Alderman Vacaro?
Aye.
Alderman Orion?
Aye.
Alderman Con?
Aye.
Alderwoman Clark Hubbard?
Aye.
Alderman Boyd? I'm sorry, Alderwoman Boyd?
Aye.
Alderman Gr, Alderman Grass?
Aye.
President Green?
Aye.
Alderman Carter? Alderwoman Rice?
Aye.
Alderwoman Howard? 26 aye votes.
By your vote, you sustain the motion from the Alderman of the 25th to third read and finally pass the aforementioned bills. Third reading report of engrossment.
Board Bill 114, introduced by Alderwoman Peel and ordinance recommended by the Board of Estment and Emporishment, authorizing and directing the issuance and delivery of one or more series of tax increment revenue notes, including RPA 6 Tax Increment Revenue Notes, in the aggregated principal amount not to exceed $4.6 million plus cost of issuance containing severability clause.
Alderwoman from the 17th, you are recognized for the third reading and final passage of Board Bill 114.
Uh, thank you, Madam President and members of the board. I motion to third read and finally pass Board Bill 114.
Second.
It's been moved by the Alderwoman from the 17th, uh, seconded by the Alderwoman from the 6th, that we third read and finally pass Board Bill 114. Alderwoman, you may proceed.
Thank you. I first want to thank Mayor Jones and the administration, and also President of the Board, Dr. Megan Green, and my colleagues who have supported this board bill. With this passage of Board Bill 114 and the companion Bill 115, we're going to be making groundbreaking benefits to the community, the taxpayers, the residents, and the city of St. Louis. We have pushed for substantial cha, uh, substantial community benefits and equity, and for the first time in the Cortex complex, we're going to have mixed income housing. The housing is going to be for individuals who are making $50,000 or less, and so that's affordable housing. That's 60% of area median income. And we know that in the city of St. Louis, we need to increase affordable housing. With the 2021 Affordable Housing Report Card, it stated that we needed more housing in terms of people making $50,000 or less. The second benefit, and for the first time in terms of this Cortex development, is that Cortex and the developer are going to be providing $250,000 to the Affordable Housing Trust Fund. And the Affordable Housing Trust Fund preserves and maintains affordable housing for homeowners, and it also increases affordable housing in the city. The third benefit for this board bill, and is for the first time, is that there's going to be an additional 10% of the redevelopment project area six. The revenues from that are going to go to this newly established fund called the Strategic Infrastructure Economic Growth Fund. These are firsts for the city of St. Louis. And then finally, in terms of Cortex, is that we've never had housing on this complex. So this Innovation District is going to be providing housing, and so it's going to be a live, work, and play opportunity. And so this is going to be really a great benefit for the city. And I just want, again, want to thank the administration, Mayor Jones, President of the Board, Megan Green. I also want to thank the Comptroller for doing her due diligence in terms of these board bills. And I want to thank my colleagues who have supported these board bills in pushing it forward and making sure that the city of St. Louis is getting shared equity in development. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Any further discussion? It's been moved by the Alderwoman from the 17th, seconded by the Alderwoman from the 6th, that we third read and finally pass Board Bill number 114. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderwoman Tyus?
No.
Alderwoman Middlebrook? Alderman Bosley?
Aye.
Alderwoman Evans?
Aye.
Alderman Page?
Aye.
Alderwoman Negra, I'm sorry, Negracia?
Aye.
Alderman Carter? Ald, woman Rice?
Aye.
Alderman Gunther?
Aye.
Alderman Ballmer?
Aye.
Alderman Lappy?
Aye.
Alderman Stevens?
Aye.
Alderwoman Switzer?
Aye.
Alderwoman Howard? Alderman Oldenburg?
Aye.
Alderwoman Peel?
Aye.
Alderman Todd? Alderwoman Davis? Alderwoman Spencer? Alderwoman Keys?
Aye.
Alderwoman Walker?
Aye.
Alderman Vacaro?
Aye.
Alderman Orion?
Aye.
Alderman Con? Alderwoman Clark Hubbard?
Aye.
Alderwoman Boyd?
Aye.
Alderman Grass?
Aye.
President Green?
Aye.
Alderman Carter? Alderwoman Howard? Alderman Todd? Alderwoman Davis? Alderwoman Spencer? Alderman Con? 21 aye votes, one no vote, and one voted present.
By your vote, you sustain the motion from the Alderman from the 17th to third read and finally pass Board Bill number 114.
Board Bill 115, introduced by Alderwoman Peel and ordinance adopting a second amended and restated TIF redevelopment plan, approving redevelopment projects for redevelopment project areas four, six, and eight of the St. Louis Innovation District TIF redevelopment area, adopting tax increment financing within redevelopment project areas four, six, and eight, all as described in second amended and restated St. Louis Innovation District Tax Increment Financing Redevelopment Plan containing a severability clause.
Alderwoman from the 17th, you are recognized for the third reading and final passage of Board Bill number 115.
I motion to third read and finally pass Board Bill 115, which is a companion Board Bill to 114.
Second.
It's been moved by the Alderwoman from the 17th, seconded by the Alderwoman from the 8th, that we third read and finally pass Board Bill number 115. Any further discussion? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Please roll.
Hearing no objection. Board Bill 115 passes. Report of engrossment.
Board Bill 76, 83, 73, 112 as amended, 104, 108, 113, 114, and 115.
All other business being suspended, the president shall in open session affix their signature heretofore to that end that they, these may become law. Courtesy Resolution Calendar.
Yes, I'd like, hello? There we go. Yeah, I'd like to move that we adopt our Courtesy Resolution Calendar.
Alderman, uh, sorry, Alderman from the, I was looking for the 25th, and he's not here anymore.
No, he, he went to go get ice cubes, and so...
Okay, okay.
It might take a while.
Okay. Alderman from the 23rd, you are recognized on the motion to adopt the Courtesy Resolution Calendar.
So I move that we adopt the Courtesy Resolution Calendar.
It's been moved by the Alderman from the 23rd, seconded by the Alderwoman from the 26th, uh, to approve the Courtesy Resolution Calendar. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. First reading of resolutions.
Resolution 152, sponsored by Alderwoman Tyus, hiring retired police officers for part-time traffic officers.
Alderwoman from the 1st, you are recognized on the first reading of Resolution 152.
Madam President, members of the board, I request the 152 be read, and I hope you have a copy this time. Thank you.
Resolution 152, to hire retired police officers for part-time traffic control, I'm sorry, for traffic officers. Whereas for many years, the residents of North St. Louis have been frightened to drive Natural Bridge, West Florissant, North Grand, Kings Highway, Memorial Boulevard because of the traffic accidents and the multitude of fatalities resulting from speeding cars hitting pedestrians. Whereas the city of St. Louis failed to properly address these speeding issues in North St. Louis, and now the residents across the city of St. Louis are terrified to drive on many of our streets across the city. Many Aldermen, Alderwomen, the Police and Citizen Service Bureau report receiving daily complaints regarding traffic offenses such as drag racing, excessive speeding, running stop signs, running red lights, and going down one-way streets the wrong way. Whereas currently, the city is experiencing, experiencing a pandemic of people who flagrantly violate traffic laws. They purposefully run both stop signs and stop, and traffic lights and drive at high speeds on both residential, secondary, and major streets. These traffic violations are resulting in loss of life for pedestrians and those in vehicles and property damage. In order to slow down the speeding and other violations, Alderpersons have been forced to spend a vast amount of St. Louis work funds on speed humps and other traffic calming devices such as closing streets. Whereas with the shortage of police, especially traffic police officers, the traffic offenders do not see traffic officers on the street of St. Louis and do not seem to face any real consequences. Not even a traffic ticket. This emboldens them to more egregious, egregiously violate the traffic laws endangering the safety of our citizens. Whereas in March of 2020, the sponsor of this resolution came up with the idea of hiring St. Louis City Police Officers on a part-time basis as traffic officers. Speaking to then Personnel Director Richard Frank, then Police Chief Commission Commander John Hayden, some retired police officers who lived in the 1st Ward and several Alderpersons regarding this idea all seemed supportive of the idea. And whereas upon further investigation of the potential for the city hiring police office, police officers to help to the number of police officers who would work in Traffic Division on a part-time basis, the sponsor discovered that impediments to such a possibility might be the requirements of the police retirement system that may have rules that prevent a retired officer from collecting his or her full benefits under the plan while working part-time for up to 20 hours as a police officer in the Traffic Division. And whereas if there are impediments to allow retired police officers to work part-time up to 20 hours a week as a police officer in the tra, Traffic Division, then the Board of Aldermen's Public Safety Committee should convene a meeting with the representative of the police retirement system, the Police and Personnel Department, to inquire if there is a way to modify any impediments to allow retired police officers to work part-time as traffic officer. Now therefore, let it be resolved as traffic safety is the most pressing issue in the city of St. Louis, that the Public Safety Committee and this honorable Board of Aldermen convene to meet with the representative of the police retirement system, the police and personnel to inquire if there, if there is any way... to inquire if there is any way to modify any requirements of the police retirement system, state law requirements, or any other impediments so as to allow retired police officers to work part-time as the police in the Traffic Division, thus allowing the city police to start hiring retired police officers for part-time traffic officers so as to increase traffic officers' presence on the streets of St. Louis. Be it further resolved that after the meetings, the public safety report back to the full board as to the outcome of the meeting. Introduced this ninth day of December 2022 by the Honorable Sharon Tyus, Alderwoman of the 1st Ward.
Alderwoman from the 1st, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board. I just want to say, this traffic thing has gotten way out of hand. I had a gentleman killed on the corner of my own street at Kings Highway and Maffet maybe a month ago. There's been so many killed on Natural Bridge and other places, South Grand. So I'm going to ask this to be sent to the Public Safety Committee and that we as soon as possible can have a hearing because we have to have more traffic officers. And if this is a way we can do it, then we need to do it right away because I've been working on this thing for two years and nothing has happened. So maybe if we move it along, we can get that done because any life we can save is very important. Thank you.
So are you making a motion to send it to Public Safety?
Yes, ma'am. I'll request it, yes, ma'am.
Okay. It's been moved by the Alderwoman from the 1st, seconded by the Alderman from the 23rd, that we send this to the Resolution 152, the Public Safety Committee. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Resolution 153, introduced by Alderwoman Clark Hubbard. The Board of Aldermen of the city of St. Louis paused our deliberations to recognize Jamie Ballantyne Dobie on her many achievements and contributions to our city.
Alderwoman from the 26th, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board. I'm asking for your favorable consideration in passing Resolution.
You're asking for unanimous consent.
Oh, unanimous consent in Resolution 153.
Hearing no objection, you may proceed. No, you need to make a motion to adopt.
I want to make a motion to adopt Resolution 153.
Second.
It's been moved by the Alderwoman from the 26th, seconded by the Alderwoman from the 4th, that we adopt Resolution 153. All those in favor signify by saying.
I'd like to move that we adopt this resolution in bank.
Second.
Second.
Remember, she was a former employee with us, and so let's not forget.
Hearing no objections, please make note of that, Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Al.
The seconded, I think, was Alderman from the 24th.
So, no.
All right. Back to the motion to adopt Resolution Number 152. All those in favor, 153, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
That's the extent of first reading of resolutions.
Second reading of resolutions.
Resolution 140, introduced by Alderwoman Clark Hubbard and Alderman Grass, the Oliver Place SBD renewal.
Alderwoman from the 26th, you are recognized on the second reading of Resolution 140.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board. I move for unanimous.
Adoption.
Adoption of Resolution.
140.
140, I'm sorry, I walked away from my agenda.
It's been moved by the Alderwoman from the 26th, seconded by the Alderwoman from the 8th, that we adopt Resolution 140. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Miscellaneous and unfinished business.
We have none.
Announcements.
Saturday, December 10th, 2022, Personnel Administration Committee will have a meeting at 10:00 a.m. via webinar. Tuesday, December 13th, the full board meeting, 10:00 a.m., 1520 Market, 1st floor conference room. Wednesday, December 14th, Streets will have a meeting at 10:00 a.m. via webinar. Public Safety will have a meeting at 1:00 p.m. via webinar. Thursday, December 15th, 2022, HUGS will have a meeting at 9:00 a.m. via webinar. That is the extent of the announcements.
We have to still excuse the Alderman, and that comes first.
That's after announcements.
Not on my thing.
On mine, it's after.
Not on mine. I was going by 24 and 25.
All right. Any further announcements, Alderman from the 12th?
Just after announcement. So sorry. So first and foremost, I'd like to thank the member of the public who stuck through with us through this four- or five-hour meeting. So gentlemen in the back, thank you for participating in what has been a bit of a lengthier meeting than what we usually have. But to my announcement, this Sunday, starting at 6:30 p.m., Project ARC is partnering with members of the Pride St. Louis Board, as well as the former Pride Parade Director, to do Kings for Kids, which is a fundraiser, just a cash remontre fundraiser, for children who are impacted by HIV in various capacities to help give them a better Christmas. So all the proceeds are going to Project ARC so that they can purchase gifts and gift cards and such to support the families that are being impacted by HIV here in the city of St. Louis. Again, that is Sunday at Rehab Bar &amp; Grill, 6:30 p.m. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Any further announcements? Any further announcements?
Go ahead. I'm going to make an announcement too. That Wednesday, we'll hear Alderwoman Tyus' bill, but anybody that wants anything heard in Public Safety, let me know. Just let the clerk know, we'll hear them all on Wednesday.
Alderman from the 3rd.
Yes, ma'am. I know we don't like to put meetings on Mondays, but, you know? So everybody's saying, no. Well, so I'll tell you the reason why, if I can.
Yes.
Alderwoman Switzer has asked for, you know, a few weeks to have a hearing on her resolution, which is, what is it? 128. And we haven't heard back from, we were looking to hear back from. Before we go out of session, I would like to at least set the meeting up and give Alderwoman Switzer a chance with us having a Tuesday full board meeting for her to be able to pass that out of committee if we can knock it out on Monday. But if that is what the committee would like to do, or if they'll show up for quorum for the resolution. Well, hopefully, mature woman. So the thing is, are we having like an extra board meeting? I just wanted to get it out before Christmas for Alderwoman Switzer. Ma'am? After Tuesday? Well, we could, can we, I mean, after Tuesday's board meeting? Possibly, I just, are we going to be able to get it passed out for this legislative session, though, if it actually passes? I mean, not the legislative session, but for the next. I'm just trying to get it out before break, that's all I'm saying. Yeah, I just, right, before Christmas. I wanted her to have the, you know, the opportunity. We, I didn't gave it two weeks, so, you know, give folks chances and. So just being respectful, Alderwoman Switzer, you're meant to bother waiting, or.
We didn't have a meeting for Tuesday, Monday.
And you can't, you don't have. You can't announce it. Too late.
Too late already? Okay, so, okay. Well. Okay, well.
Okay, we will figure out that meeting time and.
There it is, we'll check it out.
We'll get it worked out after the meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Right. Alderwoman from the 19th.
Oh, my announcement is, you know, you just, I just went blank, just a second. But first up, what I'd like to do is to announce that this Board of Aldermen had a very thorough debate today. One of the things that I want to share in my announcement to the public is the understanding of the need for debate. Debate is to happen within the body. The debate is for the public, the debate is for the learning opportunity for those Alderpersons who may or may not have all information or need to include new information. And debate is debate in this chambers, and when it's over, it's over. And when the vote is done, it's over. And so I'm excited about the robust debate that we had today. And to the public, ask your buddy or friends to come have lunch and early breakfast and watch our deliberations. Thank you.
Alderman from the 27th.
Yeah, I just got reminded, it's something I don't like to do, is have a Monday meeting. A Ways and Means meeting. I'm just like, really? So he better be glad I really like him. But we will have a Ways and Means meeting on Monday at 10 o'clock. Every day? Oh, my gosh. So just for everybody to know, at 10 o'clock Monday.
I think the weekend counts, doesn't it?
Right, any further announcements? Any further announcements? Alderman from the 23rd, you are recognized on the motion to excuse.
We are going to excuse the Alderpersons from the 7th and 14th Ward for necessary absence.
Do we have a second? It's been moved by the Alderman from the 23rd, seconded by the Alderwoman from the 8th, that we excuse the Aldermen from the 7th and the 14th for necessary absence. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Motion carries. Alderman from the 23rd, you are recognized on the motion to adjourn.
We are going to adjourn this until Tuesday, the 13th, at 10 o'clock. We're going to meet back here at 1520 Market.
Do we have a second? Oh, you all want to get out of here. It's been moved by the Alderman from the 25th, seconded by the Alderwoman from the 8th, that we adjourn until Tuesday, December 13th, at 10:00 a.m. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.